Good evening, everyone. This is Groton Board of Education's special meeting on January 21st, 2025. And it's now 6:06 PM. And we're in Central Office. The meeting's being held by Zoom and in-person. The first item on the agenda is public comments.
No, the first is the --
You doing this?
Yeah, a quick presentation.
Okay. The first item on the agenda is the quick presentation of the 2025-2026 budget presented by the superintendent.
All right. And I think Mark and Caitlin, you have the slideshow, so you can put it up. And we're going to go through it pretty quickly.
So this is the superintendent's projected budget, which the board is now working on with me and with my staff. And we are going to be marching our way through. Our mission statement is teaching and learning. And our goals are about providing dynamic, rigorous curriculum, ensuring effective, engaging instruction, and embracing excellent learning environments while cultivating an environment of diversity, equity, and inclusiveness. And moving on, just highlighted some of the highlights. Of course, we have elementary magnet schools. We have curricular and extracurricular. We really want to continue all these missions. Upgrading classroom technology. Of course, special education by law is a service that we provide. Social, emotional learning, we're always paying attention to that for both students and staff. And providing high-quality Treehouse program that some people have really taken part in. And having SROs at both the high school and the middle school. And partnering with the police around some extra support for the elementary schools. And then, of course, enhancing our literacy instruction. We just read a wonderful report, I'm going to send it to you, on UFLY, University of Florida, and the great results they're having. And we're in year two, and we're seeing those results, too. So very excited about that. Increase our rigorous and relevant math instruction based on Common Core. Amplify those Groton Public Schools' science curriculum with the NGSS science standards. Showcasing our International Baccalaureate Program. Aligning STEAM enrichment to career pathways. You know, it's really about careers. It's college and career readiness, but we want kids to find their way. So those enrichment and really lend itself to pathways. And then, of course, we have the National Defense Cadet Corps and looking towards that becoming a junior ROTC, which we really are already calling it. And that's just about promoting it and getting more kids involved, which I think that will happen. And then looking, focusing on the Early Childhood Center, possibly starting at Mary Morrison with a few groups that we already have, and joining the Early Childhood Assessment Team there. And then, these were challenges, financial obligations that we faced in, really, the past couple of years. But I'd just like to highlight to you, one of the things is legal fees, you know, between always negotiating contracts, we're getting ready for another one, special education needs, and then, you know, questions that we might have, the board may have, to get briefed on through attorneys. Health insurance, we're continuing to monitor it. We've actually seen some good results lately, a little different than last year. I feel like it's stabilizing, but I don't want to talk too soon. So we'll continue to look at our history and monitor that. We had some increases in property costs. And this budget has a contingency area. It's not a whole lot of money, but it's a little bit of money that, for the future, if we should have something like that, we will be able to fund, fund it, hopefully. Transportation costs, it actually, you'll see in this budget that it almost seems like that stabilized a little bit, because as we went into this contract, the first two years were extraordinary, and that's where we took the biggest hit. This year coming up is a 5%, and the next couple of years will be 3% increases. So that's, except for the athletic buses and some of the out-of-district costs, transportation costs, it's looking pretty good. DOD supplement is, we're not sure about the results. We knew that we were really tight with our numbers of military-dependent, and that's why we get the DOD supplement, which usually was about a half a million dollars per year in funded technology. So you'll see some increases here in technology, because we're just not certain. We think that we won't be getting that this year. But you never know with Impact Aid, sometimes you get surprises. Utility costs, electricity, like at home, at school, is really high. So the board has been questioning other ways that we can try to reduce our electric costs. And I know that Ray Engel, he might be on there, but he did reach out and look for better purchases. And this year, I think alone, he saved us about $40,000 in electricity, just by talking to the vendors and trying to make other plans for our access. And then contractual and wage obligations. You know, the Connecticut state minimum wage has increased, therefore, we've increased, really, all of those who would, you know, be at that stage. And we prepared for that with our parent contract by lifting it higher than that. So those obligations are obligations made by the board, and they're necessary. So, you know, you'll see increases there, too. And this is your budget history. You know, even before that, there were several years of zeros, ones, and some twos. And last year, because of the RPS or funding ending, and we did, we did end it. So that went away, and so did, you know, 124 positions last year. But it still was a large increase due to some of those challenges you just saw at 7.91. And, you know, you can average it different ways. The way we averaged it came out 2.14, but I think it could have been up to 2.34, was that what you were saying? Dean gave us a math lesson, and we were compounding it, I guess. But, but anyway, so, but a simple average would be 2.14. So, over, over this time, period. And then we'll move on. And so this is the proposed budget. I would say that it's, you know, it's a 6.5% increase, $93,677,419.70. So it is, you know, we've looked at every, we've looked at a lot of areas, the team here, the directors, and I, we're really scrutinizing it as much as we could. But we certainly will be ready to go through this process with the Board of Ed, and they'll help, help us to really look deeply at the budget and see where there could be areas that we could be more efficient. I would say that you're going to see a picture pretty soon, but salary and wages actually were increased from $54 million to $57 million for next year. And like I said, those are mostly contractual. And we were kind of thinking that it would be around that 5% marker, 5.3 it actually came in. Benefits are up by 6.8%. And that was really told, what we should put in for health benefits, was told to us by the company that the town hires to make those adjustments. So we were kind of given a number that we should be working with. I think it was 8% increase. But with all of the health, with all the employee benefits, it was 6.8. Purchased services is up 19.4%. Property services, 16%. But it, it all depends on the increase or decrease as a proportion of what was last year's budget. And then transportation, believe it or not, and this is an area that usually comes in way high, but it's only up 1.1%. Transportation, tuition, insurances. So that's what I was saying, it stabilized, especially with the transportation a little bit. Supplies are up. We did ask our, our principals to do a zero-based budget. So they really asked for what their needs were in that. They really did a nice job, because most of them came in between 1% and 2%. You know, there might be a couple outliers in a couple areas, but we asked, the board also asked them to put together a wish list, and they have. And there is a Google document that I'm going to get out to you ASAP for you to see. And they've highlighted the areas that they were most concerning to them. So you'll get that. But that's addition to this budget. It's not within this budget. And then, equipment is up. It started out at $74,000 last year, and it's up to $557,000. And out of that, I would say, close to $400,000 is technology. And that's the part that I was just explaining to you, that we used to use DOD, Department of Defense, about half a million dollars each year. And we have to continually replenish this technology, especially for our kids who have Chromebooks. And Chromebooks are as good as the handler, and we even do insurance with them. But, you know, we do have wear and tear on them, and they do have to be replaced. And really, when kids come in in sixth grade, they get a new Chromebook, and that really can last them into high school. And then we refurbish them, too, in high school. At the elementary, they don't take them home, so they're within the school. So, and then I had talked, dues and fees is up by $14,000. And we'll get into some of those details when we get into the function codes. And then this is the contingency fee, which I talked about, that in case we needed that, those funds. And there's a few other things in there, but those emergency areas. So that's the 26. And you see the picture. The blue is our salaries, and then the red is our benefits. And three-quarters of every budget are salaries and benefits, really. And then you see the purchased services in green and property services in purple. The teal color is transportation, you know, tuitions, insurances. The orange is the supplies. So when you think about schools and books and paper and crayons and all the stuff that comes with schools, that's really a very small portion of a school budget. And then, of course, the contingency, you almost can't see. And it's kind of hovering there with equipment dues and fees in that navy blue. And then the revenue page is always interesting. And this year, it's a good news report, because we really used actuals that have been coming in. And, you know, I was advised to, to make sure that our revenue sources were accurate compared to what we've been seeing.
Can you get that a little bigger?
Can you make that bigger, Kate? I can kind of walk you through it.
Okay.
So the first thing we looked at was federal DOD. And under federal DOD is our Impact Aid from the Department of Education. And these funds typically go directly to the town to afford education. So it offsets the taxpayer, and that's what it was meant to do. And it goes directly to education, because we use it as a revenue source in building our budget. So we had forecasted the $6,087,065, which is 6.5%. And so that's a real big lift for us going into this budget season. Medicaid was $225,000. And then the total federal was $6,312,373. And that's at a 6.74%. Then we have state funds. We have education cost saving at $25 million, $40,000 and $45,000. And that's at 26.73% of the budget. We have excess cost for special ed. That goes, all of these funds go to the town directly to afford our education bill. And it does offset what the town has to provide. And, you know, offsets what the taxpayer has to pay. And then there's magnet school transportation, that we get a refund when we're transporting kids from different magnet schools. There is adult education that comes in to us by way of a grant that helps support both the adult ed for GEDs and also those students who continue after 17 and get a Fitch diploma. And then there's non-public pupil services, for those who are in private school that come in. And the total state funds is over $26 million. We also get these EFS federal grants. And those, the federal grants add up to 8.38%. The state grants are 1.28. And then the total is 9.66. So total of all grant revenue is 44.33%, or $41,530,996, which means that the offset for the town will, this year, be $52,146,424. And if you look, the way we built this, you see the actuals from '22 to '23, the budget for '23, '24, and then the budget for '24, '25, before we get to '25, '26. So we're really doing much better in that we started back in '22, '23, and that was a good year, because the town only had to provide 48 million out of, but it was a 56%. So it's pretty close to what we have now. And then it, you know, we had some challenges, even in last year's budget, with less, that was, less revenue. So I'm pleased about that. All right. And then, just to let you know, we haven't gotten the latest, greatest from the state. It should be coming in March about where we are with per-pupil spending. But these are just our neighbors. And in, in our neighborhood of southeastern Connecticut, Groton is the gray over way to the right. And I guess the only two towns that provide less funding per pupil are North Stonington and Ledger. And you can see where everybody else fits in. So I, you could call that efficient, maybe. But, you know, it just kind of gives you an idea of how we are compared to other local districts. The DURG that we're in, which is an alliance DURG, it's very similar. I think the only one that has, pays less per pupil is Nogatuck in our DURG. So that's the, the brief end of it. And I've got some pictures of kids doing all kinds of things, because that's what we're here for, and we always want to remember that. But, you know, I thought I'd do that brief. I know I've, I've, we've presented it, we've talked about it a little bit so far. But this is the beginning of our journey, and we look forward to the next six weeks together, working hard on this.
Thank you, Superintendent Austin. And the next item, excuse me, on the agenda is public comment. And on the public comment section, citizens who wish to comment on the 2025-2026 projected budget may do so at this time. Please step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes or less. Board members will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's comments and cannot respond.
All right. Thank you. My name is Shane Gulick. I was inspired to come to this meeting in light of recent events that have called into question our children's safety in school. I do want to say, Ms. Superintendent, the response to this second incident was much better than the first. I feel like if my kid is in danger, no matter how remote that chance is, I'd want to know about it immediately. I, you know, I'm, you felt the heat the first time, I'm sure, in the fact that it wasn't communicated quickly enough. A lot of people felt, but the second time was much better. As far as what that has to do with the budget, I mean, people have ideas. Okay, so we should have more police presence at the school. We should have a resource officer at the school. All these things cost money. As that presentation just showed, there's not a lot of wiggle room in our budget. One of the things that kind of popped into my mind the other day, we have two, not one, but two, of the largest casinos in the entire world, right in our backyard. And that money is spread among the entire state. I don't think that's a fair way to allocate that money, because southeastern Connecticut is the one that faces the burden. If there were a way for, you know, local politicians, folks to get together and petition to the governor that more of that money, if not 100% of that money, stay right here in southeastern Connecticut, and then that money go directly to, I don't care if you got to build a 10-foot wall around all the schools with barbed wire on top. I want to know that my kid is going to come home at the end of every single day. And I think any parent, any, any individual would agree with that, that at the end of the day, you know, we're, we're in school to learn and, and, you know, learn how to interact with others and all those kind of things. But number one, I want to know my kid's going to come home. And these, these last couple of weeks have been scary with that. And we live in a different world now, I understand that, compared to when I went to school. Certainly, the only thing I had to worry about was, don't get in an unmarked white van that the guy says, "Free candy," and you'll be okay. Nowadays, there's a lot more that these kids have to worry about, and all of the ideas. I'm, I'm looking around the room, and I'm frankly pretty disappointed that I'm the only one that showed up to this meeting. There's a lot of talk on Facebook about, something needs to be done, something needs to be done. And, yeah, they're all right, but nobody steps up to, to come up with an idea of something tangible that, that can be done. And I think if we, if we at least try to petition the governor and say, you know, "Look, this casino money," and we're talking about, what was $80 million in just slot revenue in the last year? That's a big chunk of that budget. And, and that's just the slot revenue, not to mention the sales tax and all the other stuff that, that the casinos are bringing into us. So if we could just keep more of that money in southeastern Connecticut, I think it could go a long way toward, you know, not only public safety, but other things in our schools that need to be addressed.
Thank you. Thank you. Can you do me a favor? Can you say your last name again and spell it?
Gulick, G-U-L-I-C-K. Any questions or?
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
My name's Portia Bordelon, 24 Jefferson Drive. For the record, I'm a town counselor. For full disclosure, also, my husband, Ian, is on the Board of Education. For full, full disclosure, I also worked as a parent in the Groton Public School Systems for a couple of years when my children were younger and of age. I'm also a Fitch High School graduate. And so I, you know, I'm very involved in concerns. Just pigging out back off of what Shane just stated, I, too, definitely think there is a concern about the welfare and safety of students. And when you look at it from a budget perspective, we really do need to look at what we're doing. I did email the day of quickly when I saw this, now that the information was barely out. So I don't know if that's a funding issue as far as how it's transpired. Just like a person, you know, as, as I'm elected, as I stated, I know the board members only get the information as good as the directors up at the central office propel that information out. So you guys work full-time jobs, this is a free elected position, and you guys don't have access to that immediately until someone tells you. So unfortunately, you know, I can understand that from a Board of Education perspective. The same thing as a town counselor, I'm only as good as if something internal happens until it's sent. But with that, we, we can do better. You know, I was just thinking, like, if I owned 10 or 20 acres of land in a, I would want to know if someone's on my land, right? And, you know, you live on a small fragment of that, and how do you know what's going on in the rest of it? So as a person who also lives by Catherine Colnasky, you know, I know the trail that runs up there and then the other side of the wooded side. There have been tent camps back there for a while. Aerial footage shows them, there's been, you know, and we have a problem here in southeastern Connecticut. This just happened to be a safety for our schools, but also from a broader financial perspective, we have a safety to make sure people are housed and homed. And unfortunately, Groton does not have a homeless shelter, which is another concern. But with that, take out the threat with the gun that was involved in that situation. How come the aerial footage is from before, our school did not know that people were living on school grounds? When I leave my house, I know that nobody's living on my grounds. If you have more property, we financially have to find a way to do better to be checking that property. Things I brought up were like putting a fence along the far end of the wooded area with signage saying, "School property," should be announced at all points, and things like that. So I don't know where that's going to be in your budget, but definitely needs to be, it's, you know, just a common sense line. And who's, who's checking those periodically? Who's going out and looking at parameters of the woods? I also worked at Catherine Colnasky as a parent for a short time, and you don't know what's behind beyond that fence line in the woods, but it's school property. And so you guys should know what's on your grounds, just like we, as homeowners, should know what's on our property. So again, I'm not going to go too in-depth on that. I think that that is something larger, and that should be something that should already have been implemented. The fact that folks were able to camp out there, even though the parents were told late, the fact in general, there's not a process where people were checking in general is a concern, that we have to know. So financially, where in the line that you presented, are we beefing up some of those things with staffing, checking parameters, weekly, daily, whatever that may be? With that, again, I am really concerned, I don't, I don't see the financial director here. And I also was told that maybe that financial director's leaving as well at the end of the month. So I, I think the board should be coming out with that information. I'm very concerned with our financial continuity and lack of staffing that we're able to retain. And I just want to know, here we are, another financial cycle, and we do not have a, we're going to be not having another financial director. That's a major concern. And what that's going to look like, and no financial director here tonight, when we're talking about budget already. We have an obligation to educate our children in this district. And, you know, I have questions, like you say, we're only funding our pupil per, yep, a certain amount compared to our DURG. Who makes that decision to increase it or not? As a town, we vote on a budget or a number. Superintendent and Board of Education direct and guide where that money's moved. So you guys have the power and the ability to direct where that money goes. Unoverwhelmingly, the money is not spent in areas of special concern, like closing achievement gaps in elementary school, math tutors and things as such. We are struggling in our math department here currently for lack of continuity and tutors and support.
Portia, wrap it up.
Yeah, I, I have my timer going, I says I have a minute and 20 seconds left. Is that correct? I timed myself. Do you have a timer going?
I think being, uh, a timer went off.
I'm sorry?
A timer went off there.
Okay, then I'll wrap it up. I'll catch, I'll catch the other budget meeting. Overwhelmingly, you guys, we have an obligation to make sure, making sure extracurricular things are fun, making sure our parents are properly funded, making more, not just 50 cents or a dollar, way more than minimum wage. So we can do better in Groton. It's where you choose to allocate the funds. And I am concerned that we only use the DOD funds for our, our technology and not to support closing achievement gaps and such as well, considering that money comes in for a lot of other various reasons. So I hope to see, as this budget propels, that you guys have the power to make sure that this money is hitting the hardest-hit students, like making sure English as a second language has the tutors and supports, not just one or two in a whole building. That's not enough, and shared with students. Making sure that access and ability, making sure that we're funding lunch for all. That can be done if the board chose to move the money into that. So I look forward to see, eventually it'll come to the Board of Ed, but definitely security, safety, funding, and open and transparency is vital. And I, I am concerned about the continuity and the lack of a director in the finance office. I hope that that information will become public soon. Thank you.
We have somebody on the line. I can't read the name, can you, Denise?
Vince Yivoli.
Hi, y'all. It's actually Vince Yivoli's wife, Kate Shannon. How are you?
Good, and you?
Fine, thank you. Thank you so much for having this meeting and allowing the public to see the early stages of the budget. My only question this evening was to find out, what is included in the purchased services? Does that cover literacy programs or math programs? And would it cover any gifted and talented programs as well? Thank you.
Wouldn't it state your first name for me, please?
Oh, sorry, it's Kate.
Kate.
K-A-E-E.
And address?
And address is 8 Orchard Lane.
I don't think we have to answer it.
And the last name was Shannon?
Shannon, yes. Capital C-H-A-N-I-N.
Got it. Can you spell it again for me, please?
Yes, it's Shannon, C-H-A-N-I-N.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else online? I don't see anyone else. Nope. Anyone online, anyone else online would like to speak? Do we need to respond here? Do you want to be responsive?
Kate, there's a variety of things with purchased services. We're going to actually be going through it. So I'd like to be able to get back to you and maybe see more specifically what you're thinking and be able to answer your questions, since this is the time where you can ask questions and we can respond. But, you know, I'd like to be able to take you through that a little bit.
That'd be great. Thank you. Anytime.
Thank you.
No one else online or in the building here? Nope. Okay, so we move on to the next item on the agenda is Okay, so we move on to the next item on the agenda, is?
Not adjournment, it's comment. No, we're going to go into a, I don't know why I have this one. We're going into a board.
Going to a budget workshop.
Workshop, yeah.
So, tell me what page you're on.
So what we have done is we've gone through the object code. Last week, Adrian kind of helped support us going through that. And now you have your function code, which you're very familiar with, because that's what we've done in the past, is go through it. And the first two things we're going to look at is elementary and special education. So the first.
Yeah, what page are you on?
So this is under the pink tab, it's the last documentation that you received, the packet, under the pink tab.
We've gone through, we just got a replacement for an earlier tab?
Right, that goes under the green tab, I think it said green?
Yeah, that's it.
First three pages of the green tab.
Yep.
For the replacement.
And I see, Ray, you're on. Would you like to just describe the first couple pages of the function code, which show us a very high level, and then a little more detail, and then kind of a summary, because then I'm going to take them right to the elementary where we can really spend some time going deeply into that function code.
Hang on, I'm sorting through my pile.
That got handed out separately out of meeting, Beth, wasn't that?
The pink tab was in a packet that came out.
It came out later.
Here's the, we can work together.
No, no, because I gotta take my own.
Got three, so do I, what I did.
I apologize.
How come that, like you go to page 50, then I could just flip to page 50?
Yeah, you're going to take hers, we can get her another one. This is Anne Marie's. All right, Ray, can you hear me?
I can hear it now, I do apologize. Which section did you already review, or did you not review any of this?
Underneath the function codes, what we reviewed today, where we saw the high-level summaries. If you just could explain how this works, there's three different summary pages, and then we're going to go right to the elementary portion.
I'm still trying to get to the section we were reviewing today.
Yeah, first page of the pink.
Okay, we got it. Okay. I don't, I'm not hooked up to my monitor, so I do apologize. I had to come home and just hop on quick.
Well, I'll take them through, and you can just listen in.
Okay, I, okay, you, okay, go ahead.
Is there any way to project?
Mark, do you have it for online, did Joyce send that to you, the document?
No, we don't have it.
If you give me a couple of minutes, I'll get it pulled up.
Well, for this part, you don't really need to look at it, but there's a section that gives you really the budget, which is that $93,677,419.70 budget, which is 6.5% increase. And it's broken down to instruction, support services, community services, and out of district, but it's the whole comprehensive budget, and there's just four lines. Then they break it out a little more into components of instruction, components of support, and so it's almost like building and seeing into more detail. And then the next two pages are summary three, which outline the budget in two pages like we ordinarily see it, that brings you down to the bottom line and gives you more detail. Well, then the function code goes so that it takes each of these functions. And elementary happens to be function code 1101. And I'm just going to get my glasses, because I can't see.
You have it? Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. Are we getting it? So.
I can, what's Mark's last name, I have it here, I could forward to him quickly.
Russell.
Russell, okay.
I think Denise is getting it, too. We'll figure it out one way or the other.
Were those sent out electronically to the whole?
Yes.
They were?
Mm-hmm. But don't ask me. You've got it? So just to orient you, there's a FTA.
Can we share that on the screen?
She's getting it. On the first page of the function code, there are FTEs, and then there's a narrative. And I know Mike Whitney sent us some suggestions that we're looking into. Denise has been out, she had a medical emergency, family emergency, so she's not able to be here with us. So when Lori Lapine gets back, I'm going to have her take us through the FTE portion, but I'll take you through the numbers portion of the budget. So that will hopefully help you to understand from actuals and adopted budget of 2024 to 2025 and the difference that has happened, the shifts that have happened with both FTEs and with increases and decreases in our budget. Now, trying to make it bigger so people can see it. 1101. And the first number is $823,176 increase, if you go up to the top. There you go. All right, so certified staff, as I said, really it's our contracts that make the difference. And in a teacher's salary, there are contractual increases, percent increases, and then there's steps, depending on their tenure level and how many years they've been with us. So you see that there is an increase there. You see special ed aides, there's not very much of an increase there. And I don't think that's all the aides, but I'll have to check. Substitute teachers was up, I think you remember the discussion we had last year when we were cutting the substitute budget, and there were a couple of you sitting around this table encouraging us to make sure that we had resources for substitutes, but we did, because that budget was so tight, we did take it down. So the actual, actually, it says a $605,000 increase, but if you look back at what we actually spent in '23, '24 for substitutes, it was the number $773,671. So we've moved it to $950,000. So it looks huge, because based on the number that we put in for this year was only $344,000. So I had said something to Beverly that there were times in this budget, this current year, that we were really, you know, forced to take the budget down a lot to get to the number that we got. And that caused it to look more inflated the following year, but it actually lines up better with the prior year, if that makes any sense.
So this is a new version from what we have printed that's showing online? Or it's a different version at least? The numbers in the 100 codes are all the same, but then you get down to the 200 codes, and at least the first, the first number's different.
Oh. Well.
The group insurance professional.
Oh, okay.
I think I brought this up in the email, I thought there's a mismatch.
Susan?
Yes.
This is Ray, this is where we had found that the old links were not working properly, and we had to have, we were relinking some of the stuff. So what everybody needs to keep in mind, this budget until it's finalized is somewhat dynamic. Changes will be occurring as we find different things, and as we move through and start proofreading it ourselves, as well as what you find as a board. So yes, the 201, 202 lines have changed as of about 4 o'clock today, so.
And that was the problem I highlighted, I think that it looked like most of the, in most of the sections, the functions, 201 and 202 reflected a decrease, and then there was a huge increase in, I think, maybe administration.
Yeah, it was an error. Remember that we've had four business directors in over a year, just over a year. And so they've all done things different ways. Ray has really come to save the day a couple of times, and he's here with us now, but we had a resignation, so I'm publicly saying we had a resignation of the previous business director. And so we have posted the job, and we're looking for someone new. So I just, you know, we're doing the best we can with this. And luckily, we have Ray's expertise and a good business department working together with the central office team.
And making timely changes, timely adjustments.
Yeah, right.
And to me, it looked like the 201 code was probably just incorrectly distributed, but it wasn't clear that the total wasn't accurate. I don't know if the total for our whole budget, 201, changed or not.
No, the whole budget was really pretty accurate, because that was the benefits part. The health benefits was pretty well articulated from the town department to us about what was needed to happen. So it was a $10 million total. So, you know, that did not change, but it needed to be reallocated, just like you saw. We saw the very same thing that you had seen. So I will make sure that you all get clean copies of all of this, so that we can just start fresh, so that, you know, when we're going through this, so that it makes more sense.
Yeah, definitely, I just wanted to say, I mean, one of the things that we're trying to avoid this year was these, this situation of constant updates. So I mean, like, we're hoping, I mean, I know, at least in the ad hoc budget procedure committee meeting, like, you know, what we were hoping to achieve was the idea of having like a firm set of pages that represented the superintendent's proposed budget, that then we could work with systematically to transition into the board-approved budget. And it's just, it's hard to track.
Well, Ray, as Ray said, it's very dynamic. I don't know if you want to add to that, Ray, but there have been things, when we catch mistakes, we want to fix them, and so you're going to get some changes, because you're going to get errors corrected.
But we'll save those versions, I think that version control is very important.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Jen?
And I think as we make changes.
Can you talk louder?
Yeah, oh, mine's not working.
Take that?
And I think as we make changes, like, for something major, that we have maybe like a document to say modified staff count, rate change, increased insurance, or something to that effect, so that we can understand from version one to version two what changed between the versions. So, and it's okay to start now, you know, you don't need to go back to like two weeks from now, but like, let's say the one that you're presenting tonight is what you hold as firm, and then if you give us subsequent pages where it's major, if your is moving like $100 here, there, don't worry about it, but if it's almost like, hey, we got a better estimate on insurance, version two, or version one to version two, it's an insurance change, here's the line code X amount. It's just so that we all don't need to try to figure out where the change happened. Thank you.
Well, and I think that's part of this process when you're going through it. Is you're finding some of these things, and I appreciate when you help me find things, too. I mean, we are sitting around as a team, and we have Ray with us, but when you, you may see something, like Mike Whitney brought that up, so we paid attention and looked at it ourselves and saw that that was, you know, we looked more closely, so that was really helpful, so I appreciate that.
Now.
Did you have a question?
No.
Okay. So when you continue going down, you see summer school was down a little bit. Temporary regular aides were up a little bit, and some of that is because we're having a hard time finding our para-professionals, and so that they sometimes come in as temporary, and then they are able to take the test for the para-pro, and then they can join the para-union, is that right? Do I have that right? So, it's a nice way, too, to get people involved, and they can kind of experience the job and get more skills, and then be able to, you know, become part of the para-union. And then we have teachers in residence, and we have, I think, one of those positions for next year. So our total salary is up by 13.8%.
Did you decrease the number of positions, and for what reason?
For the, I think that's all that we could get, each year, it's a different number of people who are interested. So I think last year, this year we have two, the year before we may have had three. So, you know, we reach out and try to get.
Excuse me, Susan, I'm having a hard time following what page you're on.
So Matthew, I'm under function code 1101, elementary, pre-K through five. And I've got, I said skip over the FTE page, which is at the top. And then if you go down to the bottom, you'll see the proposed 26 budget, and it has the columns of the 24 actuals, the 25, and the 26. Do you see it on the screen?
Yeah, but I can't find it in my thing, because there's no pagination.
It's under the pink tab.
It's the fifth page.
If you go to page, if you call the first page with function codes on it, page one, go to page five.
You know, we really have to.
I know, I don't have. I didn't have anybody who could put pages on it, I really didn't have.
That's an easy thing you said of us, a header and a footer. And it appears on every page automatically.
It's several, it's several documents.
It's not a single document, that's the problem, so you have to go in and manually page it. And then re-page it from.
And Joyce will get that all done, I promise, but it's just been, we've been shorthanded. So.
I've got it, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Do you, did you find it?
He's got it.
Yes, ma'am.
Good, good. All right, so then we have our healthcare, the 201s, 202s, the group insurance, the professional, the workman's comp, social security, and Medicare. And that's another big portion of our budget, is our people and then their benefits. So if you look, we're down a little bit under the insurance, all in all, with the salaries for, the benefits for elementary. And even though that was redistributed a little bit, but I think it more affected the admin, right, Mike? That we saw that was a huge increase for the admin piece. And then. I'm just looking.
Are nurses included as certified staff?
Say that again, Matthew?
Are nurses included as certified staff, or is they somewhere else?
No, they're somewhere else.
Thank you.
This is really your elementary staff. And then, but not including nurses. And then you've got your group insurance, so there are some areas that are really down, whoops, down in benefits for this particular group. But we will double-check that, too, just for the accuracy. So. And then instructional services is up. Purchased services, professional tech services are up. But they're up because they were actually about $27,000 in '23, '24. And we had put aside $25,000, and then it really doubled for next year, based on what was requested.
Now, what's included in instructional services?
These are professional tech services. Yeah. 321 is professional learning, professional development. It might be in. Yeah.
Professional development, okay, PD for elementary.
We still have the wit and wisdom, the literacy program, and that will be a continued professional learning experience. You want to say what you got?
Can you say again, was it 321?
321. 321.
So where we see increases this year in the teaching and learning budget, specifically in 321, there was a, an additional field trip that was added to grade four that increased the budget a little bit to support, well, specifically, the field trip where we saw the increase was for buses for this field trip, to provide equitable guaranteed student experiences across the district. And again, I believe it was grade four, to do some work with Project O. And I want...
Anne Marie, why is that under instructional services and not under field trips?
That's actually falls under, under 321.
Oh, field trips?
It's almost, well, it's kind of like you're contracting for PD learning. Because they, they also train the teachers.
So that's the only item that falls under 321, but that, that was the accounted-for increase in that area.
The other thing is, remember, we did zero-based budgeting. So when the principals made their budgets, they filled in their 321s, too. Some of it was for their partnerships or for their themes, because they're magnet themes. I know they use the Life is Good program in a couple of schools, and they use the partnerships across town, Dennison, Pequot, and several of them. So when, you know, we can give you more specifics about what they had in their site budget, but that all goes, filters into this, too.
Jen?
So I just want to make sure, Anne Marie, that we're referring to the correct line. Because if you go like three or four rows down, 588, travel for field trips is a specific line item. So when it's described as bus cost for field trips in 321, that's just a little odd to me. But if it's the payment to Project O to participate in the field trip, I can understand that piece.
It's not that, I think.
It's not that.
Well, Project O is somewhere else.
Well, there's different, Project O is several...
So, yeah, no, I just want to make sure, like...
In several functions.
So we have bus trips in two locations. Is that a fair statement, then?
Yeah, I can only tell you what is in my notes and how I was guided to allocate the money.
Okay.
This is, you know, my first time going through.
We'll double-check on that.
No, no, that's what's in your notes, and if we have to move whatever portion is bus into the travel for field trips category, we'll do so.
Yeah.
Because the amount's not going to change.
Yeah.
I just don't want us going to, like, the next set of government bodies and have a similar debacle of, like, somebody's salary looks inflated because vacation's in there. I just want to have, like, if it's bus trips, let's just put it there. And we're like, we're among friends right now.
I think it's probably, I think it's probably the actual experience of Project O.
Okay.
Yeah, 321, yeah.
So it's not paying for the buses?
I don't think so. But that, that probably is an added cost to it, for sure.
Do you have the numbers for that particular thing? Because it's like 25,000 more, or so, 26,000 from usual?
Well, it's going to be, also include, remember, the site budgets. So the site budgets will also impact that. So all the principals have put in money for that, so...
So this particular increase, specific for the fourth graders, was only about, just under, just over $2,200. I can't speak to the, to the site-based experiences.
Okay. Any other questions on that?
And then, let's see. Repair of equipment is actually down by $2,000. And then property services total is down 11.3% of the 430s. Travel for field trips is down. Now, remember when we signed off on those last three years that we were still given free field trips at each of the schools? I think it was three of the largest field trips, and it doesn't mean three buses. It means whatever their largest field trip, how many buses they need, they can have. So the principals are taking advantage of that as part of that deal. Admission fees, you know, are pretty, you know, they're up, but, you know, I think that we can see that they continuously have gone up over time.
And admission fees for what, the museum?
I think, yeah, for any of those events that are probably the ones that would be in, you know, their, their field trip plans.
See, should I raise my hand?
Yeah, raise your hand.
I'm sorry.
But now, go ahead.
Thank you. This is a metaphor. Our admission fees are doubling every year over the last three years. If this is the trend in things, we need to have a come-to-Moses meeting with some of the people who are selling tickets and tell them that doubling every year is just ending, ending, ending.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in all, though, total purchase services is down 10.9%. And then when you look at the supply, the general supplies, you see that what actually was spent was $30,000 in 23, 24. And here's another, you know, 24, 25. But I have to tell you that even though it looks like it's a doubling problem, our principals have been really working off of about 50% of our budget this past year, or the year before, because of our, you know, our need in the budget to really hold tight with all of the property damages that we were seeing. We did get classroom supplies that were needed, but we just didn't, you know, get the full amount that we were looking for. So we're trying to get it back to what is expected. And here again, they put in what they wanted to, and all in all, they didn't go up more than 1% to 2% of the whole budget, but they put in what they thought they needed in their schools.
And when you talk about classroom supplies, what do you mean specifically? Are you talking about pencils and crayons?
Pencils and crayons. I mean, textbooks has its own place, workbooks has its own place, but they might have notebooks, for instance, or other things that are costly. There is a place for arts and crafts. I think that's where the art teachers puts in their funding. I know science supplies has been a real concern in making sure that we are well-plenished with science supplies. You can see this year, we put in 25,000. I know Ben Moon has been very helpful with getting them just the right supplies that they need to do the science experiments. So phys ed supplies went up this year, and then looks like they've gone up a little bit more again. But I think you always have to replenish those kind of supplies. Music supplies is pretty status quo with this year. Kindergarten supplies, I don't, it looks like they didn't have supplies listed at 23, 24, but that just might have been how the site budget worked that year.
Well, what would kindergarten supplies be?
Fatter crayons, and fatter pencils, and bigger paper.
Why wouldn't that be under general?
I guess they, they've already separated it out. It's one of those things that kindergarten always had a separate account for their supplies.
Susan, or Beverly?
Go ahead, Jen, I'm sorry.
Susan, also under supplies, like, it's not really, like, also under supplies from notes from a prior meeting, it's not just to teach the principals' requests, because that was only a small fraction of what's in supplies. What's in supplies is oil and propane, and also from my notes, like, electricity and the trucks.
This is just for classroom supplies, what you're looking at here. This isn't the oil.
This isn't supplies, like, the supplies category, because that seems like a lot. Okay, that's fine.
This is definitely for classroom supplies. This isn't for the electricity. But you're right, supplies does have other meaning, and to support our schools beyond these kind of supplies.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just making sure, because from the notes from before, at the high-level category of supplies?
Yeah.
Okay. So this is truly what the principals requested?
Yes. Yep, elementary.
Yep.
Adrian?
So, does classroom supplies also include, like, if a teacher has a carpet that gets whatever happens to the carpet where it needs to be replaced? So I know that, you know, teachers will kind of fill out their, like, dream sheet of, you know, things that they want for their classroom the next year, and that number is normally not very high. But is that classroom supplies? So if they need easels, or, you know, whiteboards, or whatever that, whatever they would need, like, in kind of more hard, you know, I'd call it, not equipment, but furniture-type things that'll last more than a year?
So it depends, because there is a section for instructional and non-instructional equipment down below. So if you're getting into furnishings and that kind of thing, bigger items, that that would go there. But for smaller items that you would have for the classroom, posters for the classroom, you know, all kinds of things that would assist, some of the whiteboards and the papers and the things that we use for teaching and learning in the classroom, those would be considered classroom supplies.
So you're saying on 730, if they had to replace tables, that would go on 730? Why wouldn't you have a line item that says furniture?
They don't have a line item that says equipment. They call it equipment. It does make sense if I have to do it all over and invent it. Maybe Ray can help.
Yeah, I wanted to interject a little bit here. Many times, most districts will create a capital item if their furniture needs to be replaced within specific classrooms. I know I did this in East Scramby, as well as Vernon. We capitalized some of the furniture that we were buying, because we would buy, like, the whole second grade, the whole third grade. We were buying rooms and rooms of furniture, because it was 50, 60 years old and just, just did not meet the needs of the students at that time.
And with that...
If you're buying one or two, it's a different story.
You're talking a CIP kind of thing, because of...
Yes, yes, you would capitalize, right.
Right. And we've had new schools, so we've certainly had new equipment and new furnishings. We still have some...
Oh, no, I'm not saying that. But when you think of furniture, I don't think of that as instructional equipment. I think instructional equipment, like, like the whiteboard, or, you know, something like that. Furniture is furniture. How are you instructing on the furniture? That's what I'm thinking.
Right, well, there's instructional, and then there's non-instructional. You have both of those areas.
Beverly, sometimes you will see items like this, maybe not in a budget like this, you will see references to FF and E.
FF and E, yeah.
Furniture...
Yeah, yeah, FF and E.
All put together in one line.
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe, I look at this, and I figure, okay, it's just even more shorthand by calling it all equipment as opposed to, in other words, if we, if we would just label this as FF and E, change anything? I'm not advocating...
If it's all FF and E?
I'm just saying, if it said FF and E, we wouldn't be having this chat, right?
Right, right.
But...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Hi.
But Ray, you can explain probably better than I can, that these codes are codes from the state, these 600s, and they're labeled accordingly, right?
These codes all map directly to the object codes within the state EFS system. Okay, actually, there's probably about a half a dozen codes.
They tell you what can be in that code?
Correct.
So that's, okay, code 730, you could put furniture in that code line.
Possibly. I'd have to, I'd have to take a look at code 730 related to the state. But this says instructional equipment, so this might be, it may be a Braille machine, it may be some audio equipment that's required for a student that needs some audio type, like, hearing-type equipment. Like, it could be some sort of a whiteboard, but again, the whiteboards are normally capitalized from my experience.
Yeah, well, we've, we've always, you know, used that DOD for those kind of things, too.
Yeah. But, yeah, it's, all of these are mapped. Now, I will say that Rotten has an extensive detail. I mean, every purchase here is in extreme detail, much more so than some other districts I've been involved with.
What, looking at the function codes here?
The object codes, not the function codes, the object codes. We break it out into very minute detail, and it's budgeted that way. But that's what, that's what you're used to, so...
Okay. But all in all, when you look at the 600s for supplies, for, you know, the classroom and for the kids, it really is actually down in the total number for the elementary level. So it's down by 27.8%.
I mean, that's largely because we bought and funded the reading program that was a one-time purchase.
You did, that's exactly right.
So it's not...
Yeah, exactly right.
It's not like we cut.
No.
It's just we had a one-time purchase.
That was an additional $300,000 in order to do that.
Maybe you mentioned it, I missed it, the textbooks are down significantly, but I think that is because of a prior grant?
Yeah, it could have been, but really textbooks, we've really gone more digitally, and they have, they have really upgraded in the past along the way. So there just wasn't a need. We bring it to, you know, the principals, and in elementary school especially, we don't have, like, the old-fashioned textbook. And when we do have a new program, like Adrian just said, the board had actually put that funding into the budget separately.
But last year, we had, maybe missing, we had like 226,000 textbooks for elementary.
That was...
Now we have 12,000. That's a big change.
I think that was probably some of wit and wisdom, too. Yeah, that was probably where wit and wisdom fell.
In the textbooks.
That's when we bought it.
The reading programs.
It's a program.
It's a program.
We've got multiple books, leveled readers.
Oh, so they're actual physical books?
Yes.
Yeah.
Gotcha, gotcha.
And they're teachers' editions and that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Did you have something, Jen? Okay.
Before we leave elementary, let me know when we're going to do that. Are we leaving elementary at this point, or we're not quite there yet?
We're almost there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I, can I just go back a little bit? Can, can we ask for just some, this general classroom supplies? It's, it's a big increase two years in a row. And as parents, everybody knows, you know, especially when the children are younger, you know, teachers kind of ask for things for their classroom because they don't have enough supplies. So I'm not saying that we should cut classroom supplies, but I'd love to know how that increase went, and what we were paying for before, and what are we going to pay for now? Like, do we just need that much more paper? Or what else is, is planned for that? Just because it's such a big...
Like I said, the past two years have been an anomaly, where really we had to, even though that was budgeted, we really were spending less than what was budgeted because of, you know, our concern for the budget. So we were really, you know, not trying to use a lot of paper. We were trying to really cut back on things. So, but I can give you more detail on that. We'll look at that. Ray, did you hear that? We can look at that over the time to see.
Yeah, because we're still concerned about the budget, so we still need to answer that question.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's true, yeah.
Yeah, I just, overall, just, you know, there's certain, certain function codes here that, you know, we've spent some time discussing, and, you know, we've gotten a good bit of detail, you know, fleshed out. But I'm just wondering, like, moving forward, is there a way? It just seems to me like there's certain codes here that, that would almost do well to have like a further breakout. If there is a, you know, as like, you know, Anne Marie just described, under, you know, instructional services, that 321, that's a broad term, instructional services. So like, in this context, what does it cover? Like, you know, to have those identified for this coming year, like, what were, what were the target purchases or expenditures that we would, you know, we're budgeting for?
Right.
So that we could differentiate this instructional services from another section where it may say instructional services.
And we also have a chart, Ray, of the, the site budgets, too, that you can look at, so you can see where their money is going, so you can see it school by school.
Are they broken out in similar function codes for site budget?
For the site budget, yeah.
Okay, so we could look at, look at any one, we could look at...
By school.
All the different elementary schools.
Right.
And across the line, add up a certain item, and it would end up this total.
And they have shared with us what they were looking for, too. So we can give you more detail on that, by school.
Well, can you put in parentheses, maybe, instructional services include, I think that's what Ian's asking for? X, Y, Z, B, A, whatever they include. You know, general classroom supplies includes whatever it includes, you know? Give us a good idea what it includes. You don't have to give us everything, but this way we have a good idea. I'm sorry, Denise, but...
Beverly, I'm sorry, could we ask Adrian, or Adrian, just to clarify his question so we can follow up on it? Because the supply account is actually down 27%. So Adrian, could you clarify what, the question you have on the supplies?
Line 601, looks like it's up, like...
It's up $100,000.
80%, increase?
Okay.
Or something like that?
So that line in particular, thank you.
And 321 was what we were discussing earlier, instructional services.
Okay.
That was up 105%.
Okay, we'll get you information on that one, too. Thank you.
And just one more quick follow-up, if I could. The site budget breakouts, is that going to be part of our budget book?
We'll find it, we'll find another tab for it. Yeah, I'll get it for you. It'll be an addendum to give you more information.
I don't think we've used the color purple yet.
Okay. Okay.
Vev, I gotta relay a...
Guys?
So on those two accounts, 321 instructional services and 601 general classroom supplies, we're in our function 1101 for elementary. Those are two places I identified as a potential for trimming the budget and because right now the budget is up 6.5 percent from last year and I'd like to explore ways that we can trim the budget while maintaining core functions. And there are obviously reasons why things swing up and down for each one, but when it's a large increase, like 80 percent or 100 percent, and...
It does stand out.
It had to be like, that's why we're asking for detail, I think, because it had to be very strongly justified, but it also looks like a place that is open to cutting and still maintaining what it would appear in terms of numbers as level services from the year before. But maybe that's not good enough in some ways.
One thing I do know is when you shift from, let's say, just a one textbook, one-size-fits-all, you might be purchasing other multiple texts. Or you might be using a resource that requires you to print something out. And you might not be using workbooks, but you might use a different resource, you know, Google Classroom or something that would require more paper.
Yeah.
So it, you know, what you give up to get what you get, you know?
Yeah, might be shifting around.
Shifting around, yeah.
Yeah, true.
Especially in this day and age where texts are like digital and they keep updating them almost annually, you know?
Yeah. And that said, just roughly speaking, 880,000 is a 1 percent increase from last year's budget. So if we're at six and a half percent, wanna get that down into the fives, then we're looking at...
We're gonna have to look at every little thing, yeah.
You know, 10,000 here, 100,000 somewhere else, things like that to add up, because in most cases, it's not like there's just a whole category that you can cut out.
Right. So the last part was the replacement of instructional equipment and additional instructional equipment, and it's really down to by 11.5 percent. So when you look all in all, total elementary, the teachers, we give our kids to school these days, and the benefits and all the things that, you know, go along with teaching and learning for elementary is up 7.5 percent.
Now, now it's up 13 because of the...
Oh, yeah, the change in the thing, yeah.
Sure.
Dean?
Matt had a senior first name.
Oh, Matt?
Thank you. This is, I guess, for Ray, first of all, you know how budgeting is not my strength? So I see what appears to me to be an anomaly, because I see, I have always understood salaries and employee benefits to work in some kind of linear relationship. The more salary you have, the higher your expenses for employee benefits. But here we have a projected salary increase of 1.6 million dollars, 13.9 percent, and simultaneously, total employee benefits of down 433,000 dollars. I just don't, I'm not challenging it. Could you help me understand it, Ray?
So we did find an error when we were going through it?
I'd really like to hear Ray on this, if you would.
Oh, okay, fine. Ray?
Okay, I'm glad she scrolled up, because I am searching for, I told you, I mixed up all my papers in our meeting and I've been still trying to sort them out here, and I apologize for that. So you're looking at the salary, which page are you looking at?
Total salaries and wages are up 1.6 million, an increase of 13 percent.
Correct.
And simultaneously, benefits are down, well, 400,000 on the screen below, 18 percent. If I have here, oh, well, maybe it's just a change in the figures. Where I hear employee benefits, I'm showing is a down 433,000 dollars. So did that happen this afternoon?
This is what happened at four o'clock this afternoon.
Okay.
And it re-invested. So that was a good, good instinct, Matt, that that's a good catch, but it's now, benefits are 18.4 percent.
Gotcha.
So...
I mean, we could raise them higher if you like, but I just wanna see some logical consistency and it seemed an anomaly to me. That's what stood out to us, they were not logical, and I, you know, so...
And we fixed it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Are you all set, Matthew?
I am all set, coming down, even coming down.
So what's the bottom line of this look like now?
Wait, Dean has a question. Go ahead, Dean.
Yeah, so, when I just did a little bit of arithmetic, I look at the, under 101, certain number of certified teachers, what we had, look, I guess we had 128, and now we're gonna have 127, right? As they proposed. So if you look at the 101 line, the budgeted figure, maybe I shouldn't be looking at the budgeted figure, maybe I should be looking at the actual figure, but I'm gonna go with this one, I'm probably out of date like Matt was. The average, if you look at the 10.8 million dollar figure and divide it by the 105, I get 84,04 as an average for the position. That's just arithmetic. I think the 10, the 10.8 million dollars, I divided by the 128, right? That should be correct. These, these 128 teachers make up that 10,800 under the budgeted for 24, 25, right? Is this mic on?
Not here, yeah.
Okay. So we're going to have 127, so now we have an 11.6 million dollar figure. Well, at 127 into that, that's an average of 91,550. And the difference, that represents an 8.5 percent increase. In other words, we have one less person projected and an increase in the figure. So the effective average pay increase, and again, I'm not begrudging anybody anything, I'm not saying this is a, you know, your mileage may vary kind of thing, but between these two numbers is an eight and a half percent increase. So I understand people move up in steps, is it GWI, the whole thing? I'm just pointing that out, that if all that put together looks like an eight and a half percent increase from the prior year. Likewise, I shouldn't say likewise, because this one's really strange. If you look at lines 111 and 130, and you add those two's numbers up, again, the budget figures from last year and the proposed budget figures this year, and we had 24.3 FTEs and we're going to 19.5, we're suffering a 4.8 loss, and now this is adjusted depending on bodies in the classrooms. We have an average, we go from an average of 13,244 per position to 29,985 per position, and that's 126 percent increase. That's, that looks really anomalous, what's happened there. I can understand people moving into older cadres, if you will, getting paid more because they moved up to other levels, but what would account for such a, such a difference in pay? Now, this is peanuts compared to the other line, of course. I'm just wondering what, if any of this means anything. So let's start with the eight and a half percent increase under certified teachers. What would account for the eight and a half percent average increase? I don't remember that GWI or the steps actually add up to anything like that.
No.
Maybe they do. So why are, why are we paying more for that line? I'm not saying, I'm not judging the figures, I'm just saying, why such a large jump for that? In fact, do we have the correct FTE figure? Are these the correct salary numbers altogether?
I had the same question for these, it looked like a, I pointed out in the email, looked like a mismatch here and in a few other places. It might not be, but it looks like the dollar amounts go up a lot, even though the narrative, the page before is the reduction.
Right.
Yeah, so, so when you go from budget to budget, it's supposed to be a 7.6 percent increase, but it's effectively an eight and a half percent increase. And it's a large dollar figure, I'm just, I'm just curious.
So it's, it's not necessarily the teacher's percent raise that they get, it's really those steps. And when there are certain steps, we've had a lot of young teachers that have moved up or have gotten their master's degrees, and those are really increases in their salary that would show these kind of percentages.
Right.
If you've got all the right things in place, like the right people. And you do have, you know, we've had a lot of retirees, you know, experienced teachers retire, and we've hired a lot of new teachers. We usually hire them with master's degrees. That's just usually what you're finding, and, you know, you're looking for high quality. And they might not have a whole lot of years' experience, but they might have, you know, the degrees to go with it, so. And then they continue to, as they go through their teaching career, to, you know, earn percent increases, step increases, other degrees increases, all those things play into it.
It's a relatively large body at 128, so it's a large sample. That's why I, it's, I'm more comfortable with an average there than I am with an average, for example, for 111 and 130, where you've got a much smaller sample of people.
Yeah, right.
You know, 20 people, that could vary wildly.
Yes, Ray.
I do know that Lori and Peter spent, God, probably three days...
Yeah.
Quarantined in her office, going over each and every salary, each and every FTE that was applied to these 101 and these lines in particular.
Yes, I know that.
So, I mean, it just, everybody's...
Right, it wasn't a guessing game. They knew exactly who was on...
No, no, no. These are real numbers based on real steps, real projected salaries for next year.
Right. And, you know, that's something to keep in mind, you know, when we, again, we're on one side of the bargaining table when it comes to the bargaining units. It's something to keep in mind that the effective terms, that the effect of the terms that we negotiate sometimes can be magnified. So when somebody says, well, it's only 1.75 percent, it's only 2 percent. We're looking at a body of people whose pay has gone up on average eight and a half percent. That doesn't mean that the individuals receive, but on average, someone's received more, someone's received less. Again, I'm not begrudging anybody their pay, I'm just saying, it's all been negotiated, but this is the effective, this is the effect. And I'm not saying this was a guess. I wanna make sure there wasn't an error anywhere, but...
No, that's true.
But if these, if these numbers are real, that's effectively what we've got, is effectively an eight and a half percent increase in, in pay. The other group, like I said, that's a much, much smaller sample. Hard to draw any real conclusions from that one, and that's a tremendous-looking increase, even though it's peanuts next to the other one. I don't think I had any other questions on this one. Thank you.
Jen, did you have a question?
So Dean, if you go to...
Jen, can you talk about...
Oh, yeah, so Dean, if you go to the green section of our original packet, so when Lori comes back, we could probably have her look at this, because if you go into the elementary row and in total certified teachers, you have 216.
I couldn't reconcile the green with these function codes. I think they're broken out the other...
In a different way?
I just, I...
Okay.
That would be wonderful to do.
Yeah, we'll have Lori explain all that, yeah.
Do you know what I mean? So I don't know, like...
That just adds a level of complication here.
Yeah.
Either those two numbers not match.
Yeah.
When I see 128 and 127, are these the certified teachers for all the elementaries? Or for K through 5, I should say, yeah, if it's the elementaries?
It would imply yes, because if you go back, right? And you go across, it says total elementary, the schools are the same.
Can I just add this? I have your answer.
Oh, good, okay.
You don't have, certified staff is not just your classroom teachers. They're your special educators, they're your school psychs, they're your social workers, they're all of those other people who are in the building servicing kids. So these are what we call the classroom teachers, and I think in it, we also have the special area teachers, we call them.
Yep.
But then there are other teachers, and that's part of what Denise is gonna fine-tune and go through with you, with her side of the house and the supports that we give kids beyond the classroom teacher, but a certified staff member.
Ultimately, these numbers here that are given in the, in the, what is the section is here, that we're looking at right now, can't...
Wait a second, Dean.
Mapped on to these.
Dean, wait, when's taken?
Yeah, sorry.
Did you answer, did that answer your question?
You're gonna find the other 100.
Yeah. Let's just have like a little map guide, I guess.
Does that answer your question?
Um, yes.
Yes, okay.
I was gonna say, so, so the FTE positions under pink should map onto, even if it's not immediately obvious, should map onto positions under green? No.
They're broken down, so, so right now, the FTEs in the green section are all of the staff at the elementary level?
Yeah.
But then what we're going through is we're breaking all of that elementary staff down into regular ed, special ed.
Right. So we're talking about, you're just slicing and dicing them differently?
Yes.
Depending on the section. But at the end of the day, they should add up to the same, Karen or Ryan.
That's absolutely correct.
But not, we're not quite there yet.
Right.
Yes, so if we, if we take all the element, at the end of the day, if we take all the elementary, it should come back to like 228, including administrators. So right now, what we're assuming is 128, we're discussing 128 of the 228, I guess.
That's right.
Okay.
Michael?
I'll just make a comment. For me, for years, I've liked these function breakdowns, because it's actually the functions that are being pursued, whereas that green one is, it's like a site total within categories, but it's, it's hard, always hard to go back and...
Well, and you're thinking, I'm thinking in tabs all the time, between the object code, the function code, and, you know, all of this, so, but it does all come back together and align.
So my quick question is, when we go through this spreadsheet, we've got it here, too, right before the budget numbers, there's the FTEs, the full-time equivalent breakdown. Are those fundamentally, when they're worked up in two separate documents, or are they linked in any way? My sense is they're probably not directly linked.
No, but when we get the unit software, they will be.
Okay, so since they're not directly linked...
But they are related, because we have Lori Lepine, who's our HR director, who works closely with the business office, really oversees a lot of operations as well. So she does work closely and they have, they have spreadsheets that work to align it.
So what I just say is, since they're separate, come from separate documents, and even though we see them merged, just spend another hour or so, just, just take a look at these, those first codes, the 100s for each function, and make sure...
Right.
Just double-check.
Double-check, got it.
It could make sense, but intuitively, it doesn't, doesn't feel right.
And I think it's gonna make more sense as we go through the process. It's one of those things that, as you see more, you know, when we go through special ed.
I hope so. Adrian, Mike, you finish?
Yes.
Adrian has a question.
So this, this number of 127 certified teachers, that should correlate with the line item 101 is just for those 127?
Mm-hmm.
So I just did the math quickly on that, and it was like 91,550 would be the average salary. And I thought the average salary ended up being closer, because, you know, so that's gotta be like the ninth step or something, right? Or I don't even know how many steps we have, but that's getting pretty close to the top step for the average salary. I thought, I had asked last year and I was told that it was the average salary without benefits was like 67,000 or something?
We use the 64,000 number for a beginning teacher. A very beginning teacher.
So that number of 91,000 for an average salary, I mean, I've...
It could be for a teacher who's midway. I mean, there's teachers who are making 100,000.
Well, no, I know, but that's the top.
Yeah.
Like, as much as you can possibly make with all the stuff, somewhere around 100. But I'm just saying, the average of that group of 127 is 91,500. Does that sound right? To me, it seems like it's pretty advanced.
Seems a little high. I think I'm going to look at it again.
All right.
But, you know, but I know it's not going to be 64,000 either, because we have a lot of still very experienced teachers at the elementary level.
Yeah. No, I'm just, I, I just gave that number as a, does it make sense number, not a...
Yeah.
I'm not criticizing any...
No, I know that. I know that.
Is it possible to give us like a percent of teachers, like divide your teaching staff into thirds? What percent is in the first lower third? What percent is in the middle third? What percent is in the upper third?
Mm-hmm. I think that's a nice chart.
Yeah, I think it...
Yeah, it could be like a format, like a bar graph.
Yeah.
Average, you know, salaries.
It's going to be like this.
Give us a sense of like the actuals.
Or...
Mathematically, it could be correct.
Question.
But it's still like, it's a hard thing to comprehend, like...
Yeah.
Under the median, and how many are above the median. Maybe a median mode range type breakdown.
Or, I might suggest a matrix that has the columns of qualifications, corrections, for example, and then the steps. Just empty those boxes out of the dollar figures and put in the numbers, if you will, or the numbers in the dollar figures, if you want. Who's, who's in which, you know...
How many staff...
Hollywood squares, yeah.
Got it. That makes sense.
Who's got a master's, who's getting paid for it, all that. We must know that, otherwise, how do we know what to pay them?
We do, we know their actual salaries they're going to be making next year and this year.
I'd be curious. I don't want to know who.
Yeah, no, no.
No names.
No names. Numbers.
Okay. Any other questions?
Now, someone wanted me to say, are you ready to flip the page?
So, I guess I do have a question. So, we're done with the, right, for right now, the discussion of this function code for elementary. Procedurally, do we come back to this at some point?
Well, I got a lot of...
At the next meeting, we can say, do you, do you have answers to the questions? Is that what you're looking for?
Well, and also, I, I mean, in this case, I'd put forward, what if we cut about $100,000 from the, from the elementary budget? And my rationale there would, would be, and I'm not proposing this right now, cut some money from a very large increase from 601 general classroom supplies, and then additional monies from instructional services, which allows up quite a bit. At the level of detail I have right now, that's what I'm thinking, of course, we'll get more information, but I just don't, I just want to know how we envision proceeding. I'm not making that motion, just wondering how we, how you envision making cuts or additions.
I think the cuts come when the, when after Susan gives us her budget, and then we take the budget, and then we go back to, okay, Mike said on, on elementary peak, what is that, pre-K to five, on the general supply line, we should cut X amount of dollars.
So we'll go once through, keep track...
Yeah, once, yeah, keep track of where you think the cut should be, and then when we get, when it's our budget, then that's when we actually make the cuts.
And even answering some of these...
Or additions too.
Or additions.
Additions too, right, right.
Well, and even answering some of these questions, it might come to us too, to say, this might not work, but this will.
Right.
And now, she's going to have a heads-up of whether you're looking for the cuts too, so...
I just wanted to...
Well, I would want that, yeah.
...a chance to make changes, because...
Yeah, right, right. No, that's good.
Last time I came through, we hit the buzzer. You guys hit the buzzer. So, thanks.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to kind of build off that, so, yeah, like what you said, like, at the time that it transitions from the superintendent's proposed budget to the point where we start processing it to become the Board of Ed-approved budget, when do we start that process?
You're in it right now.
Okay, it doesn't feel like it.
Well, you're asking questions, you're asking...
It feels like we're doing the superintendent's proposed budget and giving some real-time feedback on it.
Yeah.
But like, I don't feel like we're in that mode now, where we're going, you know, section by section, and then having an opportunity to move numbers, you know, and then vote.
Well, it doesn't work quite like that.
Yeah, I think after she does all her budget, you keep, you keep tabs of, you know, what you want to do, and then when Susan's all finished, then we're going to go back, and you can say, like I just told Michael, I think we should cut on this line item. We don't go, we don't have to go through the whole budget, because you're not going to, you know, you don't need to go through the whole budget, just areas where you think we can make reductions.
And I might bring you some too, if I've gone back and looked at something and asked the principals a couple of questions, so it's really, we're working together on this.
Now, if you, Dean, you want to say something?
No, I'm just thinking of a quote from Churchill. You know, this is not the beginning of the end, but it's more like the end of the beginning.
Please.
Right, I guess, yeah.
Because we might go through Susan's budget, and we might say, all right, her budget looks good to us, let's go with it, you know?
Right.
But we might say, okay, Susan, your budget is, like, that six-point, whatever it is, is too high. I think we should think about cutting this line item, that line item, but we let her go through the budget first.
Okay. Well, I had envisioned something a little bit more...
What did you envision, tell me?
Something, again, like akin to like the way the town and the RTM handle the town, the municipal budget is, like, you know, where it's like department by department, section by section.
I'm your only department.
And there's a calendar, like, you know, of, you know, you're flipping through the big binder, and you're handling these sections for any given night, and it's like, you have an opportunity to move numbers for that section.
Okay.
You know, you got two or three on the floor.
So you thought, like, for example, we would go to this section right here that we're on, and then we would move, and then we would say, okay...
Right. Yeah. And like, that would be the opportunity for Mike to make his motion.
What?
You know, I'm just saying, like...
I'm not married to any different, any process, so it's up to you guys how you want to do it.
Okay.
Any ideas?
Well, I'd like to be able to get through and be able to give you feedback before you start giving me numbers, and then, you know, and then where do you take from, so you've got to just be careful with that, I think.
Jen?
So...
Wait one second, are you done?
I'm, I'm, I'm good for now. I'm processing.
So, question, like, we have Monday, February 10th, a public hearing, Board of Education's special meeting on the budget. I'm assuming we would be done by then, and it's like our budget, we've already like tagged it all, correct? That's our goal?
Right.
Okay, and so now we're on January 22nd, I think, or 21st, and we have a regular board meeting. I'm just going by a calendar, so we only really have maybe two or three more working sessions, so I do agree.
That joint meeting for February 5th you're talking about?
No.
She's just going through the calendar.
The 10th, the February 10th, I'm assuming we're going to be done. That's like, like Board of Ed...
No, that's usually still, you don't vote on the budget till the end of February. You don't come up with your own budget.
Our budget until the end of February?
Yeah, so you still have the whole month of February, so that's still, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so then, are we going to keep reviewing, I'm just trying to, are we going to keep reviewing superintendent budget until September?
Well, it's going to take us... Well, we have to go through every single area, and then your feedback will help me to give you, you know...
Your final...
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll work on this together. And you're right, maybe this is a good place we could start, and I put a note in there, and, you know, working with the principals, you know, they might want to give up some of those supplies and some of those other things, especially if, you know, there's two schools that need a social worker, and they've put that on their wish list that they want to share, so...
So if you have, like, when Susan's going through her budget now, if you have places where you think we can make a reduction, write it down.
Yeah.
So when she's done with her budget, and we start doing our budget, we don't have to go through the whole budget again. You could say, okay, this is her budget, but I think we can make a reduction in field trips, and I think we should cut field trips by whatever.
And I usually take notes too, you know? I know when Dr. G did it, and when I started doing it, we would make a list after going through it with the board, and then we'd come back and say, here's some areas that you mentioned that we can't cut, and then we'd bring those cuts, and then the board would decide if that's what they wanted to do.
Okay, so I guess that's where I kind of, like, that's like the shifting sands thing for me. Like, I'd rather like, you know, have one, one approach or another, like where we're like reviewing, taking notes, and then we have an opportunity to circle back, like you said, and go through it, you know, according to our notes.
Right.
I guess I could live with that, if it's not going to be department by department, it's not going to be as structured as municipal side, that's fine. But, you know, with, with the superintendent taking notes and then giving us revised numbers based on what we're saying, like, then we all have to reconsider what we were just thinking on the notes that we did on the way through, based on what just changed. And for me, that, that feels like, you know, well, so no, do I, do I still want to make that change? Because what if there, that change, like, the other change that was just done, you know, accommodates for that, or shifts it somewhere else? I, I don't know, it just, I would like to have like a, like a firm proposed budget that then we, as a board, take the lead on adjusting.
Yeah, they, they don't like the changes.
Okay, I won't make any changes. Tell me what the changes are, and we'll make them.
They don't want constant changes in the numbers.
Right, right.
They want, when, when you have the budget, they want these are the numbers.
Right.
And, except for the health insurance or whatever that you have to change, but these are the numbers, and so this is what we're working with. It's not like, okay, it's, I'm making this up, 14,000, oh, oh, yeah, well, maybe that's the wrong number, and then you change the number. They don't want that.
I don't think I ever did that.
But, is that right?
Well, you were just saying that you would come back with revisions to your proposed budget based on the comments that we have.
Right.
You know, but that then throws us off, you know, as far as like areas that we may want to target, you know? I mean, does that make sense to anyone else?
I agree.
Right. Like, I, then, so, so like, we have a certain game plan of all the notes that, you know, we just took through the whole process.
Right, right.
And then, I'm getting geared up to go back through it again, have that, you know, week or two where we make our motions.
Yeah.
You know, but if then the proposed budget changes in that time...
Right.
And we go sit down for that week, and then I'm looking at different numbers here, like, then all my motions change.
So what about if, say, we go through this section, and right after this section, if there's any numbers that change, we get those numbers immediately? This way, when we have our final budget, we have the budget with the, we have the budget with the changes in it.
Right, so if we're going to do that, which I would appreciate, because if there are accommodations that could be made, I would just like to have a date that we could expect to have the final proposed superintendent's budget, and that's like, start, that's go for us.
Yeah, right.
And it's our turn to run around the monopoly board.
Right. What'd you say?
Ooh. It's a game.
I understand that.
Yeah, I get it.
Give it up.
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Wait one second.
So is that a process that we could, like, be honest?
Yeah, I think, that's, that's, that's what I would like to see.
Okay. So, I mean, I guess, then I would just say, like, what would that, what would that date be?
I need to get you some kind of a spring breaker.
Please, Madam Chair.
Wait one second, wait one second, because I'm still dealing with Ian. I'm not, I don't mean it like that, Ian, I apologize. I don't mean it like that.
So this iteration would be the last one that we would give you guys, this one right here. This was, this iteration would be the last one.
This one here?
This one, we wouldn't give any more changes.
Okay.
We're hearing.
Right, okay.
Well, unless we found changes, and then we gave it to you, and then you could say...
Right, I'm looking for the, the, when is the turn-in date?
Go ahead. Because to me, after we do this session, section, if there's any changes, it should be made then, and no other changes, because we already went through this section.
I respectfully disagree.
No, that's not what I thought we were doing. I thought...
But not all, not all changes.
Right.
It's Susan's, any corrections that she has to make, because the numbers are wrong.
Right, to me, it feels like we're in sort of a review stage of the superintendent's budget.
Right, yeah.
We're giving some informal, lucid feedback.
Right, exactly.
And then there's going to be an opportunity for the superintendent's office to make adjustments based on those comments.
That's right.
And then we're going to get a...
Clean budget.
Altered, but final proposed budget from the superintendent's office.
Agreed.
Exactly.
And I'm just wondering, when, when can we anticipate that date to be?
Well, what's the schedule?
Is it that, the February 10th? That was like what I was trying to drive at, like, are we, for the next two weeks or so, going to just be going, going through the superintendent's budget? Or, are we today saying that this is the final proposed, and we'll take notes down? So if Mike had like two suggestions that he wants, we write it down, and then after, we can start modifying and editing this document. So, Susan, like, bar none, no change, this is like taxes, you dropped it in the mailbox, that's it.
Right, this is it.
Right.
So, the, the projected date is February 10th, that Susan's going to be finished going through her budget.
Is that agreeable to them?
I respectfully object and would like an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, when it's your turn, so just hold tight.
Okay.
Sounds like you're making decisions right now, and that doesn't give any...
We're not making any decisions, we're just making a discussion from the, from the schedule that we have. The schedule says, according to Jen, that the, we should be finished with the superintendent's budget by...
Well, no, I'm just saying that because we have a public hearing on the 10th, so I just wanted to make sure that we're not changing things.
Well, if there's already, I mean, to me, that would be the good pivot point, because that gives us a good bit of time to get through all this stuff in detail, you know? But that also gives us about two weeks to get our work done.
Yeah.
Could be able to vote.
So, I...
So, we got to kind of find a middle road here.
So, when you look at the, the end zone, because I felt like it was rushed last year, and I think you guys thought it was rushed, like, here you had to vote for it, and like, a lot of things went on, and it got confusing. So, if you look at the end result, we're Thursday, hold on, let me get my paper.
I think we now know. Let's go through here.
Where Monday, the 24th, is the voting day, right? For the budget.
Right.
So in order to give yourself enough time for you to feel like you've thoroughly gone through it, and, you know, I've done, I've done everything I can do on my end, by reviewing it with you, and collecting your ideas, and maybe making some adjustments based on that, but then you guys want to be able to make sure that you have a couple weeks, maybe at least, to like...
Three meetings.
I would, I would actually advocate for longer. Like, in, in my mind, I would like to see, I would, ideally, I'd like to have the finalized proposed budget in hand by the 27th of January, so that we could have the whole month of February to kind of get to work as a board, going through those numbers. But...
You remember how short-staffed I am?
Right. So, so, so I think an acceptable middle ground would be that first week of February.
And that's what it looks like to me.
February 4th, 5th area.
So February 10th, you're not going to have your budget, though?
Susan should be done.
To do in public session.
She should be done.
So it's not gonna, you're, you're not gonna be calling it because you haven't voted on it, so.
Right.
You might be working towards that, right?
Yeah, how about this, like, if everyone's, oh, well, Matthew's been waiting.
Matthew, go ahead.
Thank you. I've listened intently, intently to Ian, and on one level, I agree with him. It would make our job a lot easier if we had a, a final superintendent's budget in hand. And his experience with the RTM and Town Council would seem to support this. But there is a significant difference, structural difference. And that is that in the Town Council and RTM, and the reason they get able to vote at one budget at a time and move through it quickly, is because each department has gone through its own internal process, taking all the time it needed to review it. So when they finish with theirs, it can be voted one unit at a time. Structurally, we can't do that, we have to look at the entire budget at a time. Frankly, I benefit from hearing these discussions. There's also a problem, because th- this particular pilgrim really seeing the advantage of high-density tutors. And I would like to see where we can find some funds to do that. Now, I may well be outvoted, and that's okay, I'm, I don't, I'm not gonna harp on it. But, you know, it seems like we're getting the tail wagging the dog here, we're setting a date to have a final budget without knowing if we've had a final budget, I don't want the date to be the taskmaster, let the facts on the ground be the taskmaster. This needs to be discussed. And, and I, I re, I do appreciate what you're saying, Ian, but you keep saying the same thing again and again, because you believe it, and that's fine. But I don't think it's the only way to do it. I wish I were able to be more concise and persuasive to you. But I think we're letting the tail wag the dog here. I'd love to hear from Jay, I'd love to hear from some other people.
Hi, is Jay coming on?
Yeah, he was earlier.
Jay, are you there?
Well, I, I don't think Ian wants to skip over the budget, I think he just wants to have an idea of when we're gonna be finished reviewing the budget.
Right.
I'm not sure, it, it, what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing, and perhaps I'm mistaken, is that now is the time to identify the areas that we want to add to, decrease, review. But I don't think I can look at, at the budget that we're looking at today and make those kinds of decisions without seeing the whole proposed budget, budget as a whole. And after we've seen the whole thing, each of us, then each of us makes our suggestions.
Well, I, I, Ian just wants to know, what is the process, what are we doing? What is the process, are we gonna do like the Town Council? Or are we gonna go through the whole budget with Susan and then come back and the board does it? And I just expect that to Ian. And he's good with that.
I understand that.
He just wants to know, what is the process?
I'm just, I'm just looking for a firm pivot point, where we go from reviewing the superintendent's proposed budget to voting and making it our board-approved budget.
Budget, right.
There is a difference between the two documents. And I think we need to have a process that, that demonstrates that.
So the budget calendar kind of outlines the functions that we're gonna be reviewing, you know? Day by, you know, for each of those days. Really, through the 28th, where we're looking at to- town obligations and some health insurance. And then I would say that we can start looking and going back then to those recommendations that you're making to look more closely, you know? But while I'm going through this with you and taking notes, if I find something, or you help me find something that can be adjusted, that looks like an error, erroneous, you know? Like we've been finding, these couple little things, and this happens in budgeting, Ray will tell you that, he's done budgets forever. That, you know, you, you have to modify and change it.
So after we finished, after Susan finishes with telling us about her budget, then that, then she'll make whatever correction she needs to make, give us her budget. And then we'll go through and we'll pick out areas where we, like, either make reductions or increases. Then it becomes our budget after that.
And you're also gonna see what the principals have asked for, so it might have to be saying to them, what do you want to give up to get what you get?
Right. Jen, and then, now, we'll, let's make this quick, because we're still on elementary ed and we have special ed, so if we want to move forward.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was just saying, like, um, how I was saying, like, we dropped it in the mail, right? Like your tax return, well, maybe people, we're not dropping things. So why don't we call this the final superintendent budget? And then, like, any notes that we're taking from this point on is working towards our Board of Ed budget. I mean, I mean, I'm being really strict. So if we do find errors, we'll make note of it, and then it will get changed in the Board of Ed. But this is done, this is what we're reviewing, if everyone's okay with that, you know what I mean?
Yeah, this is what we're reviewing.
This is what we're reviewing, it's already been sent in the mail. I mean, you know, I, I mean, it's a hard stance, it's trying not to prolong review of the superintendent's budget and giving us additional time, I'm trying to pull back time based on that calendar.
Help an old man understand, so are you accepting this as the, as the board's budget?
No, as the superintendent's budget.
Are you accepting this as the superintendent's budget?
Correct, and if there's minor errors that we find, we'll make the adjustment when we submit the Board of Ed budget.
No, no, but there's, now, there's errors, Susan's gonna correct them, and then she's gonna give us her final budget with her corrections that she's, like, if, if Michael says, oh, this line item's wrong, and Susan finds it is wrong.
Or Susan and the team find a mistake and we fix it.
Then she corrects it before she gives us her final budget.
Okay.
That's how it goes.
Okay.
And, and some of this is dynamic, as I said earlier. Because, for example, I'm, I'm trying to lock in fuel oil prices, this is where we, and diesel. And the, the problem is, if, if we don't get the contract signed shortly, we're gonna, we're gonna lose out on that 38,900 dollar savings that, that's being projected. Which means I may have to change a fuel line and, and the heating oil line. So things like that, this is where I'm saying it's a dynamic budget right now, until we can lock certain things in.
Sorry, it's okay.
Okay, we know there's going to be some minor changes, but no major, major changes. Adrian, and then let's move on, so we can get through this.
All right, Ray, um, so.
My question is answered, I mean, are, are we, do we have a date of pivot time?
We don't have a date, whenever we get through this, that's our date, how's that? We shoot, like, can we have a, a shooting date? We're shooting for, um.
What were you saying?
February the 3rd. Okay? February 3rd might be, because according to this schedule, January 28th is the last time that Susan's supposed to be going through anything in her budget. Okay, so I'm gonna give her another couple of days, since February 3rd, and see, okay?
But if we want to.
That's not in stone, that's if.
No.
Like, now we just talked a half an hour about something that, a schedule, you know what I mean? Well, we're not even talking about the budget.
I know, but like, you know, that was, that's the framework.
Yeah.
Is, and, and so I think February 3rd is a good target date.
Well, that, I think we had a couple dates that week, so that might be the overlap, you know, we'll see how that goes.
We'll see how it goes.
Yeah.
Moving, Adrian.
All right, um, Ray, so this, um, total employee benefits were off by what looks like about $800,000, right, negative 433 to positive 395,000.
They weren't distributed properly across the, uh, across the program.
So that's across the whole, um, whatever color tab we're on, purple or something?
Pink.
Pink tab? So, does that, I mean, so that, that makes a big difference in the bottom-line number that we're looking at. So the one that, the one that's in front of me says it's a 7.5% change. But I think if we scroll down on the screen that's up there, I have no idea who's controlling it.
Can you scroll?
Can we scroll down on this screen and see where the, what the percentage difference is?
It's 13, I think.
Yeah.
All right, so, so we're just looking at, you know, the overall elementary, but this is gonna ripple through, yeah, so the, this is a significant difference from what I'm looking at to what is on the screen.
But the bottom-line number is not gonna change, because you're gonna see ups and downs.
Yeah, but it makes a big difference when we're considering a site and we say, all right, well, the middle school's gonna increase by 6% or 10% in making the decisions on what, what we might need to cut. Or add, if, if middle school's only increasing by 2%, and they obviously have needs in that school.
Right. And remember, that benefits is adding back OPEB, because we needed to do the extra million dollars for OPEB, so that's all the interest.
I'm not talking about that, I'm just talking about getting the numbers right, because we're making, we're making decisions based on what, what to me looks like it was gonna be a 7.5% increase, but now it's gonna be a 13% increase in elementary.
But that's, that's why we fix them, because you have to make, you have to make a decision based on good, that, if we don't fix it, you, you're making a bad decision.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, can you just, I guess we're gonna have to re, so, my original question is, is this, this one error here is gonna, um, it's gonna go throughout the entire document, right, and all the sites?
But that some will be up and some will be down.
But they're all incorrect. Well.
He had to fix that whole area.
No, no, I'm just saying, like, I understand it's one mistake that just amplified through the entire document, so can we?
It was a $10 million error that was not distributed properly through, throughout the sites.
Yeah, and that's fine, I mean, that stuff happens. I guess, can we just get this whole thing reprinted, so we're actually working off a level playing field?
Yeah.
And save each version.
And save each version, as.
Call it with the date of the decision.
Right.
Yeah, this change was just made, I think, Ray, at like 4 o'clock this afternoon, right?
We found the problem first, and we had to solve it.
Or we would've had copies for you for tonight.
Okay, all right. But there's not gonna be big changes at every meeting, is, are there? I hope not.
I hope not.
Because we wouldn't want every meeting, we're getting a new document. I thi, I think that's, that's the.
The frustration.
We did have a resignation, and, you know, and we did have some challenges, so that was part of the problem. And we all came together and we got your budget, so.
Well, I'm not disputing that.
We're just gonna make sure that it's.
Thank you all for doing that.
Yeah, we're just gonna make sure it's accurate, yeah.
But I think the changes of making people a little.
Yeah, I know, we just have to be patient, it's frustrating, yeah.
We're trying to deal with it.
Right.
Okay.
All right, so, the next section that we see special ed is for preschool, and that is function. Let me get my glasses. So you're gonna skip ahead quite a bit, because we're skipping over secondary. And we're going to function 1205, and while it's not paginated, the functions are in numerical order. So it's. And it says at the top, preschool ages 3 through 5.
Does it say special ed?
Yes. This is the first part.
It doesn't say special ed, but it is special ed. Preschool.
Yeah.
So it's 1205.
Is it in the back?
It's kind of, it's about, it's about this much.
About halfway through it, uh.
About two fifths away.
Two fifths.
Does somebody have a numbering system?
I found it.
Yes, the numbering system is function 1205, Matthew, preschool.
Under what title?
Preschool ages 3 through 5.
All right.
And those are in numerical order.
Are you ready to start, everybody? Sound good? All right.
And that's in the elementary section?
It's behind it, it's, it comes, it follows elementary, right behind it.
Denise, can you give me the first number on the first line, that would help me?
120, 102, special ed certified.
102 special, okay, and then number is from FY '24, 4,377,000?
Nope.
Nope, so that's.
The number is 772,670,000.
This is preschool.
So, if, if, if the first page in the pink tab section is the first function code page you see, that's number one. We are now on page 42 and 43, just to give you an idea of where we're oriented.
Thank you, Ian.
Thank you, Ian.
Everybody has it, thank you, Adrian.
All set, okay.
How did you all find it so fast?
We just looked at the number.
We haven't been on vacation, so.
I was gonna say that too. It is our page number.
Oh, well, okay.
So the first number is, Denise, help us with this 102, special ed.
Sure, so I just wanted to share first that we do have six integrated preschool classrooms that serve students with disabilities and their typical peers, ages 3 through 5. Um, and we have an early childhood assessment team who provide screenings and evaluations to preschool children who are suspected of having a disability and live in our community. And the budget for this program, you can see, we, we also have teacher aides that support each of the preschool classrooms. And the classrooms are at either Thames River or Mystic River. Right now, our early childhood assessment team is located at Mary Morrison Elementary School. So the big drivers for, for this program are obviously salaries and benefits, which are down 7.4%. The salary is, benefits are down 53%. There's a little bit of travel for our early childhood assessment team, because they do go to the schools with the families for the planning and placement team meeting when they find the student eligible. And then there is a, um, $6,000 for supplies. So this would be, um, you know, some adaptive toys, special materials that they use to supplement their curriculum. And it's dispersed among all of the preschool teachers, I think they end up with about $500, $600 each.
And what was the 201 for them on your new schedule?
Uh, let's see, on the new schedule, it, oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at the old schedule. So the, on the new schedule, the salaries and wages are down about 8.3%. Benefits are 37% decrease.
Can you give us what the group, number 201 is on that, because I can't read it off the screen.
Sure, number 201 is a decrease of 29,171,000. The budgeted amount is 112,895.
So that's one of those areas where it changed from 69,000.
Yes.
To 112,000, it was adjusted.
This whole, um, budget for this group is a de, reflects a decrease of 14.4%.
Okay, so that's different what we have, Mike, you have something you want to say?
Oh, I, I.
I'm going by, yeah, I'm going by the one on the screen, sorry, I didn't at first. Does anyone have any questions about preschool?
Why do you think the decrease, is it, I mean, there's not, is it any changes, or you see, or?
We do, we have had some veteran teachers retire, and we have some younger teachers who've come in.
Yeah, that's true, we have had some shifts there.
Mike, first.
Oh, sorry.
You can go first, say.
I didn't mean to jump right in.
Just jump right in, let's go.
So, um, this doesn't, the TK, the numbers of kids enrolled or staff has no, this has nothing to do with the TK, right?
Right, TK's not included in this account.
All right, so it doesn't, this year or next year, it has the changes there. Do we have any, what's the, so I see we're losing, um, six aides, correct, or something, um, in total throughout the district? What's the change in projected enrollment total? And I'm sorry if I missed that.
Oh, that's okay, no, the, the enrollment really hasn't changed, last year we had a significant cut to our paras, so instead of two paras per class, we only have one. But if students enter the program and they need support, we hire a part-time para to serve as a one-to-one or a shared para. So we still have the same level of support, it's just not with a full-time staff, it might be with a part-time person in the morning, and then possibly a different part-time person in the afternoon.
So if we approved 14 FTEs last year in the adopted budget, why do we only have eight now?
Why, I just explained that.
Yeah, part-time.
There was a reduction in the budget last year.
No, but it, this is the adopted budget, so that's the final one, right? I mean, I know you explained that we have left kid.
Last year, we decreased from two paras per class to one. But we're backfilling with part-time staff to meet the needs of students.
So there's the same amount of, um, same amount of people in the classroom?
The, the paras on this page reflect full-time paras, full-time equivalents, they don't reflect the part-time paras that we've brought in as a one-to-one to meet the needs of the students.
So there are two different things, there's aides in the preschool classroom, and they used to have two, in the morning and the afternoon. And we sometimes the paras work part-time, sometimes they work full-time, um, or these aides. And then if you have a high-needs child, you might need an additional para, so really based on their IEP. But they always had two full-time, and kindergarten classrooms, they've always had one, so we went back to the one model, which they used to have. And then when we do have needs in the classroom through the PPT.
We backfill with a part-time person.
With a para.
So the student needs are still being met.
You're just not seeing the paras on this chart, though, for special ed.
Right.
That's on another chart.
No, I realize, but I'm telling you, I mean, this says aide, so I just assumed it was leaving, um, the, the IEP-assigned paras out of it.
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm just wondering why this year, it seems like we budgeted for 14, and we have eight. Correct? So if we go into the FTE.
And you look at the actual, you have to look at the actual.
No, I know, that's what I'm saying, if we adopted, if the Board of Ed adopted 14 positions last year at the end of the process, why are we, why do we only have eight in there?
Well, we have six classrooms and we have eight paras, the, um, the classroom that has the, um, multiply disabled students does have additional staff to meet the needs of those students.
So, but those, well, you're talking about stu, students that would have a para by IEP, correct?
We have a class that has multiple students with severe disabilities, that classroom has additional staffing, permanent full-time staffing to meet the needs of those students.
In addition to like one-on-one paras?
Yeah.
Or including the one-on-one?
No, in addition.
In addition to.
All right. Still going back to the, the.
I think we're gonna have to.
If we budgeted for, just let me finish, if we budgeted for 14, um, aides in the preschool and the budget was passed that way, why are we only employing eight this year? I know that we're gonna do the same thing next year, but I'm just saying, why, if we budgeted for 14, why are we only employing eight right now?
I think that's a Lori question I'll ask. Lori LaPine. I had said the FTEs, we really are gonna wait for her to get back, to go over that, because she has the, she has the actual data on that.
But shouldn't that be something that Denise approved, Lori could cut Denise's with Denise's needs in her program?
It's just, she'll know, she'll have the specific.
Yeah, yeah, we, 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 we hire based on the budget and what's in the budget. So I'd have to get.
That's what, that's Adrian's concern.
Yeah.
You have 14 that was in the budget, and then you're on actuals eight, so why didn't we hire those six people?
We'd have, we'd have to check with HR on that, I'm not, I can't answer that right now.
What, did you need the six people, and they just didn't hire them, Denise?
No, no, we've hired, no, we've hired part-time people to meet the needs of those students. So we, we'd have to meet the needs of the students, whether it's a full-time para educator or a part-time para educator. So we have the staff to meet the needs of the students, it's just how they're coded.
Oh, there you go, again with that coded.
So we, there's not.
Not you, Denise.
Yeah, no, I know.
There's not that many classrooms, can we just get.
We'll get an answer for you.
Detail on each classroom and the staffing in each classroom. So the staffing by certified teacher, by aide, and then by how many individual paras that are assigned by IEPs. Because I wouldn't include that, those paras in these numbers.
No, they're in addition. Yep.
But I'd also, I'd just like to know what that classroom looks like, so if we have one teacher and one and a half aides and three paras that really have nothing to do this, but there's, to do with this number, they're still in there, that, that would, that would be helpful for me. To know what that is, and, and, and I would like to know what we were planning last year when we, um, you know, had, you know, almost doubled the amount, I mean, a little less, like 60%. Difference in, in lower staff.
Did you get that, Denise?
Yes, I did, yep, we'll certainly. Yep, we'll certainly get that for you.
Denise, don't we have to be careful if it's a one-on-one, and you signify what grade level, and it might be the only 101 that's there? Don't you have to be careful with how you word this, or put it out there publicly?
Well, it's in the preschool.
You don't want to identify the student?
No, I'll just identify the part-time paras based on student needs. Yeah, we do have to be careful. I think Ray is talking about confidentiality. We don't want to provide information that might, you know, no names.
Yeah, but I mean, if there's.
Be transparent in terms of students.
Five classrooms, you can just go A, B, C, and D.
There's six.
There's six, you know.
Yeah. I think we can find a way to present it.
We don't care what school they're in, I just want to know the numbers.
Thank you, Ray. Yep.
Go ahead. Can he jump in?
Yeah, that's fine.
Go ahead.
I shouldn't, I shouldn't have sat seated in my time.
I made this mistake last week. Actually, I think Mike had forgotten at the hour and a half.
So, in the box for the budget narrative, you have notes and changes for 2025, 26. And there's just one sentence here, reduction of preschool aides from FY '25. I get what that means. It means that it's from FY '25, like, basically, this reduction happened.
Yes, last year.
From adopted to actual. But that message is, I don't know if it's, it's just unclear.
Yeah.
So, there are a bunch of them, they're like that, and you can use the standard, come up with an extra sentence or something.
Yep.
Use it, because it happens in a few areas. This is just a good example, where the budget's down from what we adopted last year, and there are questions about that, but we're carrying forward the current staffing levels to this year. I think it's helpful, because it, like, I'm starting to add up how many people are, are we firing? You know, like, when I see that number, I ask, are we firing six people? That would be my first thought, and that's not happening here, I think.
There's no change from this year '25 to next year, but the change happened from the year before, is what it's saying. Yeah.
I think that's.
Go ahead.
Can I just quickly go back? We cut the night of the vote, and like, February 26th, or whatever that was, that's when we cut all these aides. It was the 20 aides, I think, we cut that night. So, and that was our adopted budget. So, I would assume that with those cuts, we should have been at 14, and that's what I don't understand.
Well, that's what we have to find out, Adrian, I'll get you that.
And if I could just.
Go ahead, Ian.
Yeah, so.
Did you finish, Mike?
I just want to say, I used the wrong word, fired, laid off, or.
Yeah.
Very insensitive. I apologize.
My question has to, just a, a, an extra detail is, okay, so we, the adopted term, that means that's, that's what we approved. That was, the board of ed approved budget was the 14 positions. We only filled eight. What happened to the money that was allocated for the other six positions? Could we get that included in the report?
I'm gonna get, first of all, what does that mean, being adopted? Was it really adopted or not? So, I've got to find that out. Because I remember thinking that we had taken that cut from last year, because of last year. So, I will find out exactly what that means.
I think they're gonna have a hard time telling you specifically what happened to the money. It probably just went to, into the general fund to.
Or more paras in the classroom.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I think they're not gonna say, okay, we had $3 million, I'm making this up, of course, $3 million, and we took that $3 million, and we spent it here. Are you gonna be able to tell us that? Or you're gonna say, we had $3 million, and, you know, went into the general fund of the school district.
I can tell you what the thinking was. Instead of just having two per classroom, because we wanted to give them more support in general, we had one per classroom for general support, and then we.
Right.
Promised that we would get the paras based on the IEP for the kids who really needed them. So, in many cases, the, the classrooms do have two people. One is considered a para, and one is considered an aide. One is more for the general use of the classroom, and one maybe for specific needs of one or two children.
I, I think we get that.
Okay.
But I think his question is, what happened to the money?
You're paying for the other para.
I paid for the other para.
Yeah, I think that's where, what, I mean, to take care of the staffing that you needed.
The part-time people.
Yeah.
Well, perhaps another way of phrasing it is, what was the actual expenditure for these aides as opposed to the $158,000 it shows that was budgeted?
I also believe, I mean, there, there is something in one of our policies about transferring money, and there's supposed to be some kind of written explanation, you know, as far as like, when things occur.
You're still talking about staffing.
Right.
It's the same.
But I know, but I'm just saying, like, you know, if adopted really does mean that's what.
So, that's what I want to get you first, is what that means.
Right, there, there's money, there's a differential of six positions, whatever that, that money, that, that numerical amount is, that money went somewhere else in the budget. And I'm just curious to know where.
So, we'll find that out.
Okay.
Okay.
The budget's not over yet, you're in the middle of.
The budget's not over, it's not done.
Yeah.
That's right, you're only halfway through it, so you, you could still be accounting for it at this moment.
Okay.
Okay, Jen.
I don't want to add extra work, and I don't know if you guys already have this. Do you have like, an org chart? I think that would help.
A what chart?
Yeah, an org chart.
What?
An organizational chart, not necessarily with people's names, right? But it would be superintendent, assistant superintendent, like.
I have org charts.
Like, actual org charts. I think that will help, because then it will.
But it's not gonna have all the staff on it.
That's where I was sort of trying to head to, to say that, hey, in this school, we have 10 paras, four aides, three tutors.
It's on here, Jen, it's on there.
But, no, I'm talking about like, an org chart, because it makes it look, it makes it easy. If you don't have it, we'll worry about it next year, right?
We have org charts, but then you're gonna get more levels of detail, on, you know, for the work, for people working with children. You have organization built on leadership.
Yeah, because I think that's what's, like, we get to see all the numbers, we get to see it in the different sections, but, and yes, you do have it on the sheet, but like, an org chart that just says principal, assistant, you know, vice principal, like, admins, we can clearly see, like, and then if we have, let's say, this year or next year is the base year, and then when we go over to the following year, it would be like an easy, just check. We can, you know, start setting the foundation. Last year, we all agree, was a mess, right? So, if this is gonna be our foundation-setting year, we can start it this year, and then next year, we'll have the intelligent, you know, the data that we could go back to, so that we can start looking. So, like, even these sheets are good, right? Oh, what happened to them? These sheets are good, right? But I guess I could make the org chart. I don't want to create more work, because I know you guys don't understand.
I do have org charts, though, and it felt like I'd given them to you, but maybe they were on that FAQ from last year.
From last year?
Yeah.
I can get them.
All right, so, answer to that question.
Yep, we will get that for you. Yep, absolutely.
And Bev, I just want to say, I did, I did pull up on the website our approved FY '25 budget that's on our website, and it is that 14 FTE number we're looking at, so.
Okay, so the next section that we're going to look at is the Special Education Summer School, that's also referred to as Extended School Year.
Okay, let us get to that.
Yep, that is 1210.
That's only a page away.
It's the next page. Yep. And what we have on this page is a brief description of the Extended School Year Program. We serve approximately 141 students. This is preschool to age 22. This is a program that, since COVID, has increased because of the learning loss that students have, have experienced due to the school closures. This is also a program that used to be funded primarily through the IDEA grant, but as the need for students to continue to develop skills during the summer has increased, the board has increased its contribution to fund this program. So, last year, the board contributed $59,872. This year, we're budgeting $134,871. That's because we don't always have the grant funds in the carryover. The IDEA grant is written for two years, and in the past, we've used some carryover funds to offset the expenses for summer school, and we just haven't been able to do that because of the way our expenses have been in terms of the grant. So, and our expenses with summer school. We have to provide occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech, social workers, BCBAs, obviously certified teachers, paras. We have a nurse that we provide, and a health aide since COVID, and we have a director and a secretary. So, it's, it's really a mini-school that we're staffing during the summer.
Four to six weeks.
And it's for four to six weeks. It is half-day only, but it is, it does require a lot of staff. So, this, this program is up 125%.
Right.
So, I think this is enormously important program. I just wanted, just two things. One, that code 153 nurses, when, when we present the budget, we might want to add this into the added obligation for the nurses. I know it's just $15,000 on top of a million or so, but there's, might be other places in the budget that, because it, because that would have been supported by the town side from the.
Oh, we've always, we've always paid for the nurse for summer school. The town doesn't cover the, the nurses in the summer.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, because the program is only students with disabilities, so historically, it's always come out of the board's budget.
Right, well, it's money well-spent, I'd say. My, my other point is, because these were zeros in last year's budget, in terms of all the hundred accounts, or most of them at least, I think the, in the page before the numbers, there's no FTEs. Should there be any?
There, I think there should be.
Yeah, and, and so then the narrative will have the changes.
Yep.
I think it's just, I think it's just missed, because last year, there was nothing there.
We can add that.
Yeah. That's a good suggestion.
That's a great suggestion.
Adrian?
Yeah, I, I'm wondering, I know this was run at Northeast last summer, I believe. Is there a cost difference to run this at a more central location? Because I think some of the students were being bussed, and we found, I think we talked about this in a, in a meeting last summer, but, or last fall, but some of the students spent more time on the bus than actually in summer school. I think the busing was well over an hour for some children. And in the, the school that we chose is, is on the far east side of town, where it seems, you know, based on demographics and need, that the needs would actually be closer to the west side of town. So, for busing, is there, number one, is it less expensive or more expensive to, to move it somewhere else? And maybe we should put the school where the need is, and we'd have, you know, the kids that, and I'm guessing that the kids that show up, or that will get, the kids that need to be there will have an easier time getting there.
Well, we, we have Camp Button at Northeast Academy, so in the afternoon, students who attend Camp Button, you know, just transition, right, you know, they're within the, within the school building itself. And then we have the regular Discovery Camp at Mystic River, which is in close proximity. So, it's been nice to be at Northeast, because we have the camps close by.
And it was a way that we could feed all of our students in our schools, that if we didn't have the special ed program at Northeast, then the rec camp would not be able to, you wouldn't feed the kids. So, this was a way that we were able to feed all of the kids. And I wouldn't say that disproportionately, we have, you know, I mean, we have to look at it, but I think our special needs kids come from all across the district, you know, so there's someone who's gonna take a longer bus ride than another.
Yeah.
Right. But we can look at it.
Well, I'm just saying, by, if we think about high-needs, then high-needs, you know, is like, financial, like, you know, the financial aspects of the parents, like, put kids into that high-needs, and that's clearly in the, in the west side of town.
Yeah, I think when I looked at it last summer, the need was more in the military end of town, but I can pull the data out.
I would also say it's west, the whole Thames River, except for the very south part of it.
Well, actually, right down, right down this road, right, from Northeast to the, to the base, you know, to the housing.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure that's where most of the students were, but I'll pull that data out and look at it.
So, is it, can we just run this? Why couldn't we run it at Fitch or, or the middle school?
We need little children furniture and a playground for recess.
All right.
Yeah, we have a lot of really young children.
And you know, every single one of our schools is used for one program or the other. They're pretty, you know, a high school has credit recovery and.
Right.
Enrichment, and the middle school runs a program, every single school.
Every school is used.
Is used.
Yeah, we need the younger bathrooms, so we really do need to be at an elementary school.
Yeah, it just, to me, it seems, you know, like, the parents on the eastern side of town are more likely to be able to drive their kids to, to school, and in the western town, you're gonna have a lot of parents that aren't gonna have that option as easily available. So, I, I would like to see if there's a financial difference and other reasons that we can't do that.
Sure, yeah, we can look into that. We have the data, in terms of the street addresses of the students who attended.
Yeah.
But if we did that, with those kids, you lose the free lunch, and then.
Well, that's an Ernie question. We'd have to talk to Ernie.
Yeah, okay. And if they did lose it, and if we wanted to provide the lunch, how much would that cost us?
Let me explain. Northeast Academy is not one of the CEP schools, and it, no matter who comes, they, they really basically, you know, the reason that we're able to provide is that the, the students in that group.
Qualify.
Qualify, so that they would be able to have, have it there. But the children who are, let's say, in the rec camp, and these are all of our kids, you know, at.
Mystic River.
Mystic River. I'm trying to remember exactly. Sam had it down.
Mystic River qualifies for free reduced lunch. It's a title school.
Mm-hmm. But I'm just trying to think, there was someone who would not have qualified if we didn't do it this way.
Northeast.
Right.
The ESY kids would not have gotten breakfast.
So, what you're saying is, you're using these kids that have to drive, travel an hour.
Well, no, I'm not saying that.
That's what the other kids could do.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that.
That's what it sounds like to me.
I'm not, no, we don't know who those kids are. I'm not gonna say that.
Okay.
Special ed are all high-needs kids, the free and reduced lunch, that's inappropriate.
Okay.
That's inappropriate.
Right.
That kids are, you know, special ed children are in all economics, in, in all families, and they're in the east, and they're in the west.
Right.
You know, they're everybody's kids, so.
All right, so then you can have that program at Catherine Kolenowski or, or Thames River then.
Well, Thames has the city park and rec camp, and Catherine Kolenowski has Treehouse. Well, Thames has the city park and rec camp, and Katherine Kolnaski has Treehouse. So historically, you know, that's how the schools have been allocated.
But we'll look into it. There could be a way we could switch one around if it works better for transportation.
So there's no rec camps at Thames River?
Yeah.
Not Thames River, at Mystic River in the summer?
Yeah, they have Discovery. So Mystic River has the town rec, Thames River has the city rec, Kolnaski has Treehouse. We've had ESY at Northeast, and then Barnum has a, a STEAM camp and a writing camp.
That are all free to parents from us.
So you could have that school, you could have that program at CK or Thames River.
Well, there, it's being used with the Treehouse and the City Rec. It's already being used by another program.
But we'll look into it, Beth.
Well, CK, you just said, does Treehouse use the whole building?
Yeah, I'm confused here.
I don't know, I'd have to ask.
No, they can't use the whole building.
Treehouse takes over a lot of the building. Yeah, and our custodians have to clean. I can't put two camps in one school. I'll make the decision, but we'll give you the data and we'll show it to you and share it with you.
Okay.
So, and then we can ultimately make the best decision. It's my decision to make. Just saying, that's why you hired me. And we want to make sure kids can eat breakfast and lunch.
But that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I know.
You got mad when I said that, Beth?
I know. No, no, I'm not mad, I'm just saying, I'm putting my foot down.
I did say it, though. Go ahead, Jen.
So I think, this doesn't come out rude, but I think our summer school education is more important than like our park and recs. So park and recs should be able to move whichever school you determine.
That's true.
Right? So if we need to support our special ed kids and they need to be at Katherine Kolnaski, because that's where they're going to benefit the most, we put them there, and parks and recs need to move according to our first priority, which is our students. This is students learning versus students being integrated and kept, you know, informed or like, you know, motivated during the summertime. So we, as a district, need to identify, our kids come first, we figure out what school, and you guys work around us. From my understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, we don't get a reimbursement on maintenance and cleaning from park and rec. And maybe if they are using our buildings, we should.
I just want to say one thing, Jen, that you said. You said where they benefit the most? I think they're benefiting at Northeast. It's just the travel that we're concerned with.
Yes, no, I know.
Is that whether they're benefiting? They are benefiting from the program. It's just the travel.
But they're not really benefiting, because like, a poor child sitting in a bus for an hour is not benefiting anyone.
I don't remember a lot of kids, I mean, there might be some kids that.
More than an hour.
Yeah.
We have to look at that.
We'll look into that.
We'll look into it.
Okay. Ian, you have something to say?
I was just going to say that that could also be a good opportunity to, I mean, the transplant data, you know, I asked about.
Transplant?
Yeah.
We don't know.
Oh, the math.
Right. Well, not the math, just, just, just a chart or a table, just the raw data would be fine too.
We did request the specific thing this summer when we were talking about this.
Yeah, yeah, but I think that would be a good overlay.
He's been asking for it for a long time.
No, I mean, we.
Like last budget season.
All right, I wrote it down. I'll put it on FAQs, so I don't forget it.
Thank you.
Don't ask Ian, when is she going to get it, though?
I'm, I'm a little busy, Ian.
I'll check the FAQ every day.
Just a little busy.
We're okay with all data.
I'm wearing lots of hats these days, if you know what I mean.
We said we're okay with all data.
Please get it to him sooner than later, because he has been asking for that for a while. So I would appreciate that if you did, I think. Anything else? Denise?
Okay, the next section is, again, it follows on the, the, the next page. The next section is 1220, and this is our EL department, oftentimes referred to as multilingual learners. So I don't know, Amory, do you want to address this a little bit, or?
Are there any changes from?
Did you want me to?
What we have in our packet?
Let's see what we have for staffing.
We have a teacher at the elementary. And she is, she actually looks, she goes to the schools with the largest caseloads, and then she helps oversee the EL tutor population, who are meeting with other children in other schools. And she does, I think, the testing and, and oversees part of the grant. And they've also included, Groton Middle has one certified EL teacher, and Fitch High School has one certified EL teacher. So we have one at each level.
Okay.
And then you see the number of tutors below.
Okay, and this, this category is, has an increase of 62.6%, and I believe that's mainly because of the tutors. And I think we added five EL tutors this school year.
So that is different than what we have here.
Yeah, because we had 61.6, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
So we need a fresh sheet, sheet on this one.
And that probably had to do with the, that had to do with the insurance, the 201? What was the 201 for the?
For this group, it was 39,851.
Okay.
It's actually a decrease of 17,293.
So that was a change.
All right.
Ian?
So I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly as far as programming goes. There's one full-time English language learner instructor that is split amongst all the elementary schools?
Some of the schools have maybe two or three, but Mystic River has the most, so she's mostly out of Mystic River, and I believe CK. But it looks like a third, she does a third at each of the buildings. And then she, there are tutors in the, in both, in all the buildings, so that they also, and some of the tutors have been with us for a very long time and have had a lot of good training. So they are meeting with kids as well.
So I'm also seeing another differential here between the adopted and actual for 2024, 25. For the tutors, it goes from 7.5 to 30.5. So that's our current budget right now, that's in, in operation. So we had budgeted for 7.5?
I'll just make sure that those are all EL tutors and not other kind of tutors too. I think the 7.5 was the original EL tutor number. So I will check to see if that 30.5 doesn't include other tutors as well. It says district-wide tutors. But I thought we had hired five more for EL.
All right, I guess maybe that would also be helpful to, to clear up. I mean, if this page is about ELL support, then maybe just be ELL tutors that are here.
So that, but we're going up to, well, I don't know if we're going down or up, but we're going to have 23 ELL tutors in this budget? Or no, 30.5?
That's the change. And that's what I have to ask.
We're going to have 30.5.
I'm not sure that they're all EL, so let me check on that. I knew that there were five more from the 7.5 adopted, but I, I'll have to check on the 30 number.
So you think it's 12.5?
That's what I would expect, but.
What did you say, Mike?
Oh, because if, if we have 7.5 in the adopted, and if, if you think at least there are five more, then that would be 12.5.
What's the community coordinator? Can you tell me about that person?
Community coordinators, we have in every building, and then I guess we have one district-wide as well, and they usually help support the office, they help family engagement with families, they help, you know, with forms and, you know, getting families what they need and working closely with the principal and the office staff, and.
So why do we need district-wide one if we have one in every building?
Well, this one must be particularly for the EL program, so I have to find that out.
Mikey, get your finger up.
Yeah, I do have a question. Actually, so this is an example in the budget narrative box, where it says notes and changes, and in this case, it says increase one FTE at GMS due to conclusion of grant funding. I know this will always be asked, right, because when grants end, often there's a initiative, momentum to not continue funding the positions. But, so I think it'd be really helpful to at least include what grant it is.
Okay.
In there, and there are a few others through the.
That say the same thing?
Yeah, and it'd just be helpful, because it might be, it might, well, it'd be good enough.
Okay. This is special instruction, yeah.
Also, something, something else that might be helpful in the narrative box is maybe having some comparative numbers as far as like the approximate number of ELL students in each school.
That's a good idea.
So that, I mean, because initially, like instinctually, I'm looking at one person spread across all the schools.
Yeah, that would help.
I'm thinking that wildly insufficient.
Good idea.
But if there is a, a evidence-based counterargument to that, I'd love to hear it.
I'll get that for you, you'll see.
Thank you.
I guess I would just like to ask, the community coordinator, so that's a new position we're adding?
Yes.
Or we added it this year, but we didn't have it in the budget?
And like I said, when Lori gets back, I will ask her the same question, but I can't answer that for you right now.
What's the question about the community coordinator again? I want to make sure I get it down.
It's for EL. It's a new position.
Okay.
But it's in.
It's been added.
Okay.
Over the course of this year.
Okay.
So I want to get Amory on the road, so we'll, you know.
Can we go on?
Yeah.
We all set to go on to the next one? Okay.
So this would be 1230, special ed K through 12.
Yes.
This is your big bucket.
Yep, this is where the special ed teachers are in the budget, and you can see that we have 53 certified teachers. You can see the breakdown by school, with the largest staffing obviously being at the middle school and the high school. And these are teachers that work in either a resource room or a more specialized classroom. And, you know, obviously doesn't include our special, special teachers, like, you know, teachers of the deaf and, and those teachers, or preschool. So this is just your special ed resource or specialized teachers. And then we have our para-professionals allocated by building. We've seen a lot of independents at the high school, so we've had a decrease in para-needs at the high school, which has really prepared the students for work or for the transition academy. And then the other thing I just want to note about the para-staffing is that there are additional paras that the district hires and utilizes, and they are allocated in the IDEA grant.
And there was what, 49 of them?
Those are about 45.
45 in the IDEA.
In the IDEA grant.
So this isn't the total population, but this is the population that's in the operating budget.
Right.
Is it, can you, can you tell us, Denise, like, how many regular ed paras and how many special ed paras?
These are all special education, these are all working with students with disabilities, either in the resource room or the gen ed setting, or in a specialized classroom.
So they're all special ed teacher aides?
All of them, yeah.
Because it says regular and special ed, that's what's on there.
I, I think that's just the coding in, in the budget, but they're all special education paraeducators.
Okay. Can we somehow just say that in that regular and special ed?
I think that's just the way these things are coded.
Yeah, we, we can ask, but I think that's a legacy.
Okay.
Term. But they're all, you know, because of IEPs.
Yeah, okay.
And then looking down at, at the actual budget amounts.
Denise, I'll take that second.
Oh, yes.
Can I ask you a question on the paras?
Sure.
How did, so we were at 31 at Fitch last year, and, or at least that's what was adopted, but we only have 16 and a half now?
Mm-hmm.
How does that happen?
We've, we've significantly decreased the amount of one-to-one paras, and we have students with more enhanced support at the high school.
What do you mean by more enhanced support?
It's a shared para-model.
All right, are there, so I've, I've heard that we were doing this a lot. Are there any, I mean, how do we know that that's working? That that's actually a better method for the students?
Well, we know from their performance, from the fact that they're making progress on their goals and objectives.
Well, making progress can be a huge variation, right? You can make 1% progress or 50% progress in a year, so.
Well, that's the barometer for free, appropriate public education, is is the student deriving educational benefit. So the students are making progress. We do work with the administration if there's a need to provide increased support, but they have a nice model that they've utilized in terms of scheduling and using their staff to provide support that's fostering more independence. We do have some specialized classes at the high school that are more of a specialized nature, so it's not necessarily an honors or.
Or like unified.
An AP, yeah, curriculum, it's a, it's a modified curriculum, and those classrooms really don't require a significant amount.
They have teachers too.
Of para educator support, because the, the special educators are modifying the curriculum and delivering it in small groups.
Yeah, but the, the paras are on, in the IEPs, so what's happening? Are all the IEPs changing?
No.
Well, kids change.
No, not that I'm aware of.
And we review those, we review those all the time, so you have kids coming and going. So depending on who the kids are and what their capabilities are, that's going to change year to year, your number of paras.
I guess we're, I guess there's a difference in my understanding from talking to some people that when this doubling up happens, the, the student with less needs ends up getting much less service. And so I guess we make data-driven decisions, so, so do you have any data for us? Are there any studies that show that this model is better? Or is it just us that are saying, I mean, does anybody else do this and it's successful, and there's some actual data?
Well, there, there's a lot of data to support an over-reliance on paraeducators, and the fact that as students get older, the, the goal is to increase their independence and their autonomy, and help them, you know, be more self-sufficient. So we still have students with one-to-one paras, especially in our specialized classrooms.
I mean, it just seems like a lot less if we just cut, like, 40% decrease from 31.
Well, there are more paras at the high school that are funded through IDEA.
Yeah, but they wouldn't be, I'm, I'm going to assume that that number's probably about the same, because they would be this year and next year and last year, right? So.
Well, sometimes they change.
Yeah, they change based on student need.
So you can, you can get us some, some actual data that shows us that what we're doing is more beneficial to the students than.
Well, I can't share the progress on their goals and objectives, that's the data that we utilize.
So there's no measurable data for us to know that it's actually better, it's just?
There's measurable data, but it's confidential, it's in terms of their progress on their goals and objectives.
So that's why I was asking, are there any studies or other data that can show that this, this method or this, what we're doing is actually beneficial to the children? So I mean, are we, are we the only school in the country that's doing this? Has anybody studied it?
Denise, you and I can review it.
Yeah, as I said earlier, there's a lot of data that indicates that an over-reliance on adult support is not appropriate as students age and get older.
Well, it is the gradual release. We do want our kids to be able to.
I'd like to see what, I mean.
Be more self-sufficient.
These, these students take standardized tests, right?
Not all of them.
How can we measure it that you can tell me about, or us about, I should say?
We'll work on that.
How can we measure that this is actually beneficial?
Well, that's a very general statement. We, we make individual decisions at the planning and placement team meeting based on that individual child.
Yeah, I've been in those meetings, I, I understand that. I'm just asking how we can measure it. Like, do we just take your word for it that it's working?
Well, we communicate with the buildings on a daily basis, so if the buildings have a need, we work with them.
We are, we are adding more paras than we're taking away, I have to tell you. I mean, I think we're up to 205, so we've added more as you go through the year.
We're actually at about 150, right? Because we have on average of about 30 vacancies, and then we have an average of about.
When Lori gets here, we'll find the exact number.
12% absence.
Right now, we're over. Right now, we're a little over 200.
No, I know, but the actual amount of paras we have in the system every day is.
Based on their attendance?
Attendance and open positions. We have somewhere around 30 open positions, right? And, and attendance is 11%.
I don't know if we have that many open positions. I'm not aware of.
A month ago, I asked, and that was the number I was given.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that.
Maybe it's different. So I'm just saying, like, it, you know, it seems to me like if you have 200 and, and you say we have 30 open, that gets you to 170, and then we have something like 11% absenteeism?
Well, we have sub-paras, we have quite a few sub-paras, paras that are waiting to take the para-pro and be hired as full-time paras. So we also have sub-paras that support us.
I'm just wondering if these para-numbers are high enough, given the need with, with how many absences there are?
So one of the things I'll tell you, we do.
Can we see the number of sub-paras per day?
Can I just tell you how this, how we work this out? We meet with principals and go over the caseload and the IEPs and what's required, and we do it probably three times a year. So kind of beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year, and we make adjustments and we make determinations. So this number may not even be accurate for when you adopt it, because that's an ever-changing because that's an ever-changing number. Kids are coming and going. Their needs might change. The IEP may change a couple of times in the year. You can't say that this number is going to be this even tomorrow, even if you're saying this is what the number's going to be. It could be changing. Could add one, you might take away. But meeting with the principal is essential. So and they do let us know. Don't you think that they don't tell us what they need? So they're very good about letting Denise know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we have, we track.
And based on knowing the children, knowing the families and knowing what the IEP says, so.
Yeah, we track for each school. So we have spreadsheets that monitor the staffing in each school for our specialized classes, our one-to-one paras, our enhanced paras, our preschool classrooms. We meet with them frequently to monitor, update.
Yeah, I know that the total number of paras in the district has been pretty consistent, though, around two hundred, I think.
It has been. And that's where we are now.
Yeah. So if we're having, I just, like I said, I'm mostly questioning the data that shows that this model is actually beneficial to students.
I have to say, our model isn't any different than any other school district. It's not a special model that we have here in Groton. We're always looking to increase that independence on a student so that they don't have an adult following them around, particularly in high school.
But there's also a service that is needed for those students.
Absolutely.
I mean, we can go back and forth on this, so I'll just wait.
And sometimes they'll cluster kids in a classroom, so they're there together.
All right, I don't want to dominate. So Ian and Mike have their hands up also.
Well, I just, I have a similar concern. It's more just like I'm looking at the number thirty-one, which was we adopted, which is what we voted to support. And what was delivered was sixteen point five. So, I mean, that's, again, my question, similar to the other one, is where does that other money go then? Where does it get transferred into the budget if it's not being spent on the paras that we allocated for? And I would push back a little bit on the idea of presenting data. You know, in a lot of the training that I had in acquiring my special ed certification, we did review case studies where goals and objectives were given in an anonymous fashion. And you could show, you know, student A progressed, and this is what progression looks like. And, you know, maybe you say, like, you know, depending on, you know, what the conditions are, sometimes the progress, you know, is small, and that's significant for the student, you know. But and then other times, like, you know, progress can look mathematically big but not be enough for the student. So it all depends on what, you know, you have, there's ways to anonymize the IEPs and the data so that it could be analyzed in a way that's clinical, you know, for someone on our level to look at without violating confidentiality.
I think what they're saying, Ian, really, is that you have to trust them, that they know what they're doing.
That's right.
I think that's what they're actually saying.
Please do.
That if they, that they, that they don't want to hurt a student by not giving a student what they need, that they really feel a student need. And I know people have different experience. I see Portia's head coming over this way. But everybody has a different experience. But it comes to trusting the staff, in this case, that they know what the student needs and if the student needs something, that they would provide that. And I see you, Portia, I see you. But everybody's case is different, and we have to have faith that they want the best for the student, too.
Right, but I.
I know what you want. So you want them to come in with a case study, and this is the case study. And then we say, yep, you're doing a good job. That's not trusting them, really. We're going to sit down. On your job, it's different because you're a teacher, so you can listen. But we're not teachers, and we're board members, right? So we have to have faith that Denise knows what she's doing and that if it's going to hinder the students, she would give them the para professional. I hope you would do that, Denise.
We just added two paras to Charles Barnham.
I don't want to sit down and review cases. That's not my job as a board member. That's Denise's job.
And our principals feel good about doing that. They'll come to us.
It is possible. That's all, that's, I was just going to say, like, you know, it's not, it's not.
We just don't have the time to do that kind of analysis at this point.
I understand that. I'm just saying, it is still technically possible.
Yeah, we just added two paras to Charles Barnham, and we just moved a student at the middle school who had shared para support to one-on-one. So these are conversations we have with the principals every day, and it all goes back to progress. If a student's not making progress and a student's struggling. Jamal Davis called me up, and we reviewed the IEP, and he said, I really think we need to move this student from a shared para to a one-on-one. He's just not in a good place right now. And we did. We moved that student to a one-to-one.
It happens just like that on a daily basis. We listen to what they're saying. And we go in those classrooms, and we see it for ourselves.
I also, just to give you a little window into my world, we get an exit report from our Power School manager every month. And we see which, who's exited the district. And do they have a one-on-one para or do they have a shared para? And we reallocate that para, if it's not needed at that building, to another need in the district. So we're constantly analyzing what's our student population? Who's leaving? Who's coming in? We're seeing more and more students come into the district with para support on their IEPs. It is definitely a support that not only Connecticut utilizes, but other states as well.
Mike?
So I have a.
And then Dean?
I have a couple of things on the budget narrative box. I think it just needs to be cleaned up. The first one was increase one FTE at Mystic River due to enrollment. In the chart, it's actually two. But I think it's actually more important just to say there's a net increase of point five for special ed certified. So this is more general. The next one is, you mentioned about the, does not include the grant-funded IDEA positions. That's great to have there. But then I think there also should be another line dealing with the change in that one-eleven and one-thirty-one, like we've had in others. So in this case, in the adopted, it was one-fifty-seven. The proposed is down fourteen point two. And if you want to say that the proposed number is the same as the FYE actually, you can do that as well. And you might want to say, like, say similar, it's due to enrollment or those numbers are projected based on, or based on projected enrollment, something like that. And then my comments are, I learned a lot through this discussion, the back and forth. And I was trying to think, well, is this, is this something that we could talk about in the curriculum committee? I thought, yeah, it does have a role, certainly a shared para model, that model, like, in what you mentioned, that progression towards more independence certainly could fit within the realm of curriculum. And on the committee, I'd be happy to have a review on that sometime. But it also occurred to me, while I was still thinking about it, that we spend a lot of money, and rightfully so, on special education. These are among our high-needs populations, and there's always been an achievement gap throughout the country, and we're always seeking to close that and support everyone. I would like to have a board to have a special education committee. And I'm just making that comment now, but I'll bring it up at a regular meeting another time. Thank you.
Dean?
Yeah. It's not a question of trust. We're an oversight body. So, yes, do we have the expertise to be able to counter the experts that we pay to say, well, this is how we're going to design our special ed program, our curriculum, if this is how we're going to staff it, et cetera? No, we don't. We're dilettantes. But we still have the oversight function. And we get to ask the questions. And it's, we're the only judges of how much information we need to be able to make a competent decision. Some people want a lot of information. Some people are satisfied with the presentation. That's just going to be whatever it is. But I have no problem with the questions being asked.
Anything else? Agent.
I got to loop down because I had a couple of questions on the issue. What's our current special ed teacher to student ratio?
It varies.
Are you asking us to get that to you?
I mean, you must know about.
Well, in specialized programs, it varies. Sometimes you'll have six to eight to ten. And then regular caseloads, it can be fifteen to seventeen, but we can get you exactly what it is.
What was your question?
Caseloads, it varies.
Yeah, and then also what historic teacher to student ratio is with the special ed teacher's caseload, basically.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Because obviously, they're not, obviously, they're not meeting with all twelve or fifteen or twenty or thirty kids.
No.
However many are on the caseload at a time.
No, and they have hours and needs.
Each one has a caseload, correct?
Right, right.
So what, so do you know about what that is?
It varies. It's bigger at some schools and some grade levels. Right now, it's larger at Mystic River and Thames in grades four and five, which is why you'll see when you get our wish list that we've requested another teacher.
So it would be helpful, I guess, in evaluating that wish list to know what the historic student to teacher ratio is? Like, what was it back in twenty nineteen or twenty seventeen? You know, and obviously, there was big changes through COVID. And, you know, I've heard in the district that the student teacher ratio is very high right now. So I'd just like to know a little bit more numbers on what the need is there. Thank you. That's it.
Matthew? Matthew, have your hand up?
Thank you, thank you. I'm sorry, thank you very much. I'm looking at Fitch dropping from thirty-one to sixteen and a half, and I don't dispute that. You've done that on the basis of your assessment of need. But it is a large number, and I'm kind of wondering if that kind of fluctuation is historically happening, bouncing up and down, and whether it really is wise to cut back the projection for the coming year to what last year was, particularly given the large number of transient students we have coming in and out. Would it not be better, and it's a rhetorical question, would it not be better to plan for eighteen and a half or seventeen and a half or nineteen and a half at Fitch so that we have the staff available, the funds available for the staff, should we have a higher caseload this next year? And if we stay at sixteen and a half because it doesn't change, then we could perhaps, the administration could redirect that money, whether it's to aides in another, in another, in another school or pay for tutor, for high-dose tutoring. Are we, in your opinion, are we perhaps relying too much on last year's utilization in designing this year's utilization budget? Thank you.
We don't have like, like we have in guidance, how many cases a special ed teacher should have? We don't have anything.
Parameters?
Yeah.
We used to. I know the self-contained classes go up to twelve. We don't have any right now at twelve.
No, they're all, but they're ten.
The highest I have is ten.
Okay.
And then I think for resource, it's up to twenty. And we do have some that are twenty, twenty-two.
And you think that's a realistic number of cases for resource teacher?
Well, we give, we support them with para educators to help, you know, help. We do have some teachers in residence in special education, and we do have some student teachers. And those all help.
It's not only caseload, it's hours. So there could be a child who's on your case but only needs a little bit of time every other day or something. Or there could be a child on your case that you need to see an hour a day. So it's not just about the number of cases. It's the cases, it's the level of need, it's the time that's on their IEP. So there's lots of factors. We don't just look at pure caseloads. Yeah.
So you don't think that there's a better than fifty percent, I'm picking this number, better than fifty percent chance that next year we'll look at? We budgeted for sixteen and a half, and we have nineteen. And we had to take the money from some other line.
It could. I mean, you do see changes like that, Matthew, from school to school and grade to grade. And, you know, so it is like, it's very dynamic. Even though that number, that end number of two hundred and one ninety-five to two hundred has been pretty status quo. But it can change in the building and at the grade levels. So it is very dynamic. But we'll take a closer look at it.
Do consideration to intentionally under-budgeting for that.
Yep. We will, we'll take a closer look. We can check with the high school.
Jen?
I'm, I'm just like out on the limb by myself tonight. So.
Yeah, we're here with you.
Yeah, we're here.
No, because I'm going to disagree with. So Dean mentioned that we can ask all the questions. Yes, totally agree. We're here right now. We're here right now dealing with budget, and I think we've deviated, and we need to go focus back in. Lori comes in and meets with us three to four times a year. That is the time when we should be asking her about the services, the structure, and everything. And if, and right now, we need to focus in on the budget and not interrogate, like, like, how's performance? How's this? How's that? Like, we had that chance three to four times during this season, and we didn't. So now, next time around when Lori comes, we can make sure.
You mean Denise?
I mean Denise, sorry.
That's all right. Lauren's going to talk on special ed.
No, sorry.
She just wore lapel hats, but no.
We, that, we should ask these questions then or, as Mike said, in the curriculum committee. But we need to focus in on the budget right now. And maybe that is going back and saying, this is all of the resources we have for special ed, whether it's certified staff, paras, aides, and then we look at the overall population. But, but going through and asking about every single, like, school right now, I don't necessarily know if it's appropriate at this time.
Okay.
Quick response. The big thing is, is like a forty or forty-five percent cut in paras at Fitch. That, you know, so that's, that's why I think it's budget-appropriate. I mean, we didn't know this when Denise was giving the, even though we apparently were staffing, you know, fourteen and a half fewer paras than we budgeted for. We didn't know that when she gave the presentation on special ed. So we just found that out now.
Moving right along.
Sorry.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. Unlike a lot of other areas, like the math instruction or something like that, this tends to draw us into, do we have the appropriate level of staffing? Okay, point one. Point two, in general, when we talk about averages, you know, we wanted to know, you know, what's the ratio? Sometimes, if I remember my statistics, those figures are meaningful. Sometimes they're meaning less. Sample size is too small, or you've got huge deviation from reality. So it's kind of like, you know, housing prices. You can always find the average, but how meaningful is it in the area? So I would, you know, whenever we ask for averages like that, ratios like that, keep in mind how meaningful would that number be?
Okay.
Anyway.
All right, Denise, continue.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Beverly. And looking at the budget for special education, you can see we have a four-point-seven percent increase in salaries and wages, which is not too significant, and a point-nine percent increase in benefits, which is pretty minimal.
Because we changed the two oh one. What was the two oh one number?
The two oh one is, for this year, it's, one sec. It's budgeted at one million twenty.
Just so you all know, can I just jump in?
Yeah.
This page in front of you is different than that page on the screen.
One million twenty thousand five hundred and sixty-five.
Go ahead, Denise, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, no, that's fine. And then we do have a line here, line five sixty-one, vocational skills tuition. We are responsible for providing services to students with disabilities through twenty-two, age twenty-two, that is. So we do have some students who, who really need supported group employment in the community because they, they just have a skill set that's slightly different than our Transition Academy. So that's the account, that's the line item here for five sixty-one.
Do they mean, do they go out and work?
They do.
Like short training? Job coach?
Yep, it's group-supported employment with a job coach. Yep, it's group-supported employment with a job coach. Yep, yep.
And it's like the next step.
Yeah, we contract with, for that.
Into the game of life.
And is that increased because of increased cost per student or is it just more students or both?
So it's, it's increased because there's a huge emphasis on preparing students for college and career readiness in the workforce. So we have a lot of students who, you know, who, who need, you know, support in order to be independent in life. They, they have the capability of obtaining competitive employment, but they need just a little bit of support for a year, sometimes two years. And oftentimes, we'll look at providing that support maybe three days a week because they might be looking at taking an online course at Three Rivers the other two, or they're looking at, you know, applying in the community and getting, you know, employment independently, but they need a little bit of support to get there.
And also the law change so that now we have to continue to educate kids all the way through their 22.
Through age 22.
So into 22.
Through the school year, through the school year in which they turn 22.
So you could have a child turning 22 in July and you have to provide free appropriate education all the way through till 23, or almost 23.
For the whole school year.
So.
Seen it firsthand, make a wonderful difference.
And so, and then, and then this, this is also a way to make a wonderful difference, that they can actually get some possible employment and, you know.
Yeah.
Continue to grow.
Yeah. And they earn minimum wage, so that's a, a big motivator for a lot of our students. We do have a slight increase in travel. We don't do a lot of travel. A lot of our PD is remote, so this is a very small increase. And we do have, again, travel for workshops, conventions, slight increase. So other purchase services is up 20%. Pupil tests, this is an area that, these are individualized assessments that we administer when we're looking to determine eligibility for special education. So it would be either an initial eligibility or a three-year reavow. Oftentimes, our tests need to be upgraded to the most recent edition, but most of this money goes to our Pearson, to our online scoring program. So the teachers now are able to plug in their raw data and Pearson Q Global creates some really nice charts and graphs for them so that they can present the data in a really professional way at the meeting. And then lastly, we have special education supplies. This area we reduced significantly last year. We did bump it up a little bit for this coming year to 30,000. And that's spread, you know, among quite a few special ed teachers. I think they each have about $500. So overall, the special ed budget for the resource and self-contained teachers is up 4.9%. Any questions on that?
And I really felt like this got us to a good place.
Yeah.
Because you might, we might have some other straggling information that you can help us out with.
Okay.
Like nurses and.
Okay.
Some of the smaller buckets, but that really takes us through the majority of the special ed. So.
What about blind? Blind's not special ed? Next page.
Oh, is there one more?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Did you write, Denise, the blind student?
Yes, we do not employ a teacher of the blind anymore. That teacher, it was dual-certified in special education, so she now teaches in the Transition Academy. And we're fortunate in Connecticut, we have the Board of Ed Services for the Blind. So the state provides a teacher of the blind free of charge. So there's no expenses for teacher of the blind.
So what about this page? Rip it out?
No, it's just working with comp and Medicare.
Yeah, yeah.
Who's that for?
Um.
If there's no teacher?
Yeah, I'm not sure. Last year it was zeroed out. You could see FY25 is all zeros. That might be a misunderstanding on, on Ray's part, so we can share that with him.
Okay.
Correction. I did not prepare this, remember?
No, he did not prepare. Thank you, Ray.
I just saw this this week.
He's dealing with it right now.
Thank you, Ray. Yeah, we'll talk to the, the folks that are inputting the data.
Okay.
I, I have a lot of catching up to do, obviously.
I know.
I'm in the same boat you guys are.
And you don't do enrichment or anything, right?
These are our after-school programs.
There might be a couple other things that we have to hit, but at this time and their travels, I think we can hit them at a later time. I mean, like nurses and things like that.
Okay.
And help us.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
And I'll get you yours.
Thank you. All right, we.
Are you guys, are you guys done with me for tonight, by the way?
Yes, good night, Ray. Good night, Ray, thank you.
We'll get the, the sheets that need to be updated. You'll give us that.
Yes.
Okay.
Good night.
And Jen, you have the schedule? Can you say what's on the next meeting and that stuff for me?